We will now convene the regular meeting of the city council at 7:40. Would you all please join with me in re-signing the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation, God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the agenda. Councilor Nodelle, one more time.
One more time and it's a doozy.
I knew you'd appreciate that.
I move to amend and adopt the agenda as follows. First note, the final updated version of consent agenda item 3.34, the communication from Marie Friedman and Jean Richards regarding Burlington International Airport budget amendment for fiscal year 2019. Note written materials for consent agenda item 3.36, communication from Jean Richards, request for approval to sign a lease agreement with the rental car concessionaires Hertz, DGS, Avis, and LRAC, doing business as Enterprise Rent-A-Car, National and Alamo, to occupy and operate the quick turnaround facility. Note written material for consent agenda item 3.45, communication grievance settlement agreement between the Burlington Fire Department and the Burlington Firefighters Association, per Assistant City Attorney St. James. Remove from the consent agenda item 3.52, resolution, Fourth Amendment to lease agreement with the Leahy Center for Lake Champlain Inc., doing business as Echo, from the Board of Finance, place it on the deliberative agenda as item 4.055. Please note, not 4.10, but 4.055, per CAO Anderson. Add to the consent agenda item 3.53, communication from Jeff Glassberg, CDO, Real Estate Development Coordinator, and David White, interim CDO Director, regarding council update on City Place Burlington with the action to waive it, accept it, and file it. Note Mayor Weinberger's communication regarding agenda item 4.06, resolution contract for the reconstruction of City Hall Park, Board of Finance, per Olivia Lavecchia. Note checklist for this agenda item. Note final version and title change for this agenda item, per City Attorney's Office. Note City Hall Park detailed budget for this agenda item, per CAO Anderson. Note updated written materials for this agenda item, per CAO Anderson, budget sources and uses updated, and CHP IFL request updated.
Thank you, Councilor Nodelle. Second, Councilor Busher?
Yes, but President Wright, a question for the city attorney. 3.45 is the grievance settlement, and we have not had executive session. Should we be acting on that, or should we remove that from consent?
I think the idea of executive session-
Please use your microphone.
Yeah, our office provided two sort of detailed communications, and the executive session was a placeholder if it was wanted or warranted on the part of the council.
So it can stay on consent unless, is that what I'm understanding from you?
I mean, that was our perspective, but I think we were leading up to the council.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Busher.
President Wright, for clarification, since it's on the consent agenda, when, once the consent agenda is adopted, it would be approved?
When we pass the consent agenda, if no one has removed it, it will be passed?
Right.
Yes. Okay, everybody understands that. So with that, item number two is the public forum. Whoa, we have to vote on that, yes, thank you. That Councilor Busher threw me off there. All those in favor of the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have our agenda. Item number two is the public forum, and we have a lively public forum tonight, so you have two minutes to speak, and we want to hear your comments, we want to hear your passion. What we ask is that there's no personalities are brought into it, be it the mayor or city councillors, that you make comments through the president of the council, and that it is respectful. We want to show how it's done here in Vermont, in Burlington, not the way it's done in Washington. So, thank you. So we will open the public forum tonight with Ali Zapparo, to be followed by Charles Simpson. Ms. Zapparo, there we are. Welcome, thank you for being here.
Hi, thank you-
And I'm sorry, everybody make sure that, so the channel 17, and everybody can hear you, please pull the microphone right in close to you.
Not usually on this side of that table, so. My name is Ali Zapparo, and I'm a resident of the Old North End, and I have the honor and privilege of calling Jane Nodelle a professional collaborator, a friend, and a mentor. I just wanted to take a moment this evening to express my deep gratitude for the work she has done on council. I've known Jane for less than a decade, but I know that the work that she's done, I've benefited from, and that work she's done over many decades, including 10 terms on council, I believe, right? City of Burlington is not a place where passion for leadership and plain old criticism works. We need smart, thoughtful, brave, inclusive, and strategic people, and that is the kind of person Jane is. Jane has served on a lot of leadership roles in the city, benefiting countless seniors, students, young Burlingtonians, our neighbors who were born outside of the U.S., and a number of other folks. It's not easy being a real changemaker, especially when you're not in it for yourself, and you engage in authentic governance, and that is what Jane does. Burlington is a sophisticated, complex city, no other city like it in Vermont, and you need somebody that has the right mix of financial management and ethical integrity, and Jane's always been that. Jane navigates positions of power with a rare sense of grace and humility, and takes every decision very seriously. I haven't always agreed with those decisions, but I know that she uses her wisdom, experience, and her heart to guide her. Jane has one of the biggest hearts, and is one of the most thoughtful, ethical, and actually humble people I know. So I will really miss you on city council, but I know that you will always be an active member of the Burlington and Old North End community, so thank you, Jane.
Thank you, Ms. Zapparo. And I should mention at the beginning too, that absent any objection from the city council, we will, I will be having item number six, which is council comments on general city affairs, be right after the public forum, so we will be, and I will expect that we will be talking about our fellow city councillors that are leaving. Not that I can order you to not talk about something else, but I hope that's the way we use our time tonight. Mr. Simpson, you're up next, welcome.
Good evening, thank you very much. I'm a city resident, and I'm concerned about the park. What can the city do with $6.3 million, or $5.8 million, assuming we spend half a million on soil remediation, which it really took citizens to discover, this toxic soil? Well, we could cut taxes, should otherwise rise once a $70 million price tag for the new Burlington High School bites deep. According to the Chindon County Homeless Alliance, there were 359 homeless on the day they last counted in the county, 1,291 statewide, up 5% over 2017. Cities around the country are trying new methods of dealing with the problem, permanent supportive housing with social services, clusters of tiny houses with shared kitchen and sanitary facilities. What is clear is that the homeless are heavy consumers of medical services, 3,700 for a single ER visit, heavy users requiring $44,000 a year in medical services, and permanent housing cuts these visits as well as interaction with the law very sharply. Spending money on the homeless or simply returning it to the taxpayers rather than building a gilded, and let's face it, ghastly Las Vegas-style monstrosity of pulsating illuminated fountains on hardscape in a completely redundant performance space is a win-win. It's a win for democracy because it means the city will finally take seriously the city and state constitutional requirement that fiscal items that generate signatures for an advisory ballot actually get put before the voters. A win because it preserves the dignity and tranquility of our Central Park for the continued use of children and seniors in historically sensitive and tree-shaded state, and a win because the city will have avoided making a historic, our historic downtown, a downtown where an 1816 Unitarian church is the iconic centerpiece, avoid making this an eyesore that a future generation will deeply regret.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Up next is Donna Walters and Monique Fordham coming up together, I presume, so.
Our time, too, if that's-
Okay, yep, that's fine. So Donna Walters, and then we'll hear from Monique, so set that, set the timer for two minutes, and then we'll start it again for Monique Fordham. Good evening, Donna and Monique, welcome, you're going first, Monique.
I'm gonna go first, yes, okay.
You have the floor.
Thank you, thank you, members of the council, for your time tonight. The mayor likes to talk about the years of outreach and work expended on this redesign plan, and yet after all these years, the city has never really been straight with the public as to where the funds for the project would come from. In fact, for years, the city stated on its website that the park redesign would be funded by the downtown TIF funds, period. Then just three months ago, the Free Press stated that quote, "According to city planners, almost all of the $3 to $4 million price tag would be paid through private philanthropy." A week later, on January 3rd, the Free Press printed a correction, printing a quote from the mayor's spokesperson that said Burlington's share will likely be a combination of TIF stormwater funds and capital building funds. Two weeks after that, on January 18th, the mayor told Vermont Digger that he estimated the total price tag for the project to be $4 million, and that in addition to donations, the funding would come from property taxes, the TIF, and from the institutional bond, and saying that the price was a good deal. Then on Friday, just days away from this council vote on construction funds, the mayor released his force configuration of city funding sources, along with a whopping new figure for the cost of the redesign, which is now $6.3 million, a full 2.3 million more than the public had been led to believe up to this point. So today, literally with two hours before this meeting, there is another plan that's come out, that in order to deal with this exorbitant price tag, skimps on materials and eliminates the bathroom, which is one of the prime movers for this in the beginning, which will then be pushed through to next year's budget, in other words, hiding again the full cost of the project. In light of all these facts, how could anyone say with a straight face that there has been a robust public process here? The hallmark of this failed process has been a lack of genuine transparency, glossed over by plenty of expensive slick PR, and coupled with more borrowing into the future and 11-hour financial shell game maneuvers. We strongly ask the members of the council to speak up for their constituents who never got a chance to vote on this project, and please vote down this astronomical exploding price tag.
Thank you, Ms. Fordham. Donna Walters, and I am gonna have to keep everybody to the two minutes.
So I had prepared some statements, but after going to the Board of Finance meeting just before this meeting, like, none of them are relevant, so I'm just shocked and appalled at the way this administration does business, last minute, a bunch of deals, the public gets no notification, but apparently the private partners get notification because they were willing to cough up another half a million dollars in donations, and in exchange for that, we get fewer amenities and a lot less quality in terms of the materials they're using. So I would like to ask the city council to not approve this, it's too fast, it's too rushed, there's too many questions, and we don't even know what we're getting, and we don't really know what it's gonna cost us, because there's a lot of things we won't be getting that we will probably pay for later, so. I, I'm almost speechless, I don't know what to say, I'm just very disappointed in the way decisions are made for projects that there's a lot of controversy around, and you're just gonna rush it and ram it through so you can get it done? I don't know, it's not the way I like to see business done, and I think a lot of other people feel that way, too. So I hope you, you know, give some consideration to what the people that are paying for this, how they're gonna feel about it, they're not gonna be happy about it, and I'm sad about that, I'm sad and I'm mad, so. Remember in November.
Thank you, Ms. Walters and Ms. Fordham.
I like that, we'll remember in November and March.
Brian Precourt is up next, to be followed by Lauren Glendavidian. Good evening, Mr. Precourt, welcome.
Hi, my name is Brian Precourt, my family owns the building, oh, my family owns the building on the corner of Pine and Pearl Street, across from Bov's Restaurant, the older one there, the Omnium Gathron Building. I'm here to comment on the sale of the municipal parking lot behind Bov's. I sort of came late to hearing about this, I knew that there was some development going on there. In 2001, I was opposed to the sale of the front portion of that parking lot to Bov's for the Victoria Place thing, where the parking lot was reduced from 57 spaces to 30 municipal spaces. Now it's being reduced further in that there's really no guarantee that those 30 spaces are going to remain. My commercial tenants use that parking, and it has a drastic effect on my building, my building that's been there for 150 years, and is trying to maintain itself in that Last week, I heard on the radio, at a radio show, that the mayor had made a comment that a great deal of study goes into these parking decisions. I find that hard to believe, in that the study was done, that the Cherry Street parking garage, the downtown one, the mall one, was torn down, this lot is being sold, and the belief that the removal of all of the parking spaces on the south side of Pearl Street was a good idea to do last summer. You're taking away all of the parking for our building. In 2001, when I complained about this, CDO promised me that no, this will remain municipal, but if you read the agreement, and I have, there's ways that they can tweak that, those 30 spaces do not have to stay municipal, and I think it's a shame what's going on here. I was promised back in 2001 that that lot would stay municipal, and then all of a sudden, well, we're doing it, and if you look at the way the zoning was figured-
You can finish your sentence.
Those municipal spaces were counted into the calculation in 2001, they're being recalculated for the new development, they're double dipping on this thing. I think it's ridiculous what happened with this.
Thank you, Mr. Precourt, and I don't think I mentioned the lighting system, I think most people know, but there, when the yellow light goes off, then you're getting close, when the red light goes off, then your time's up, but you finish, you always get to finish your sentence, that you're- Lauren Glendavidian is up next.
Hi, good evening, Lauren Glendavidian.
Good evening, welcome.
Resident of, I'm not sure where I live, but, I think it's Harrington Terrace, so I'm here to say thank you to the departing city councillors, Richard and Dave, and in particular Jane Nodelle, my friend, and I have some comments here from Megan Humphrey that I'm gonna read, and here they go. Thank you for this opportunity to show my gratitude for Jane's service to the Burlington community over many years. While she began as my city councillor, Jane became a friend through mutual interests and priorities. I appreciate Jane's pragmatism, her ability to compromise with other viewpoints, her fiscal responsibility, and her commitment to remembering the most vulnerable people in Burlington. I'd like to honor Jane's lengthy history of service, of serving so many of us, most especially the older adults in the city, whose voices are often left out of the conversation. Thank you, Jane, for your commitment, and I look forward to your kind heart contributing in other ways in the future. So that's from Megan Humphrey, and I would just add, I think one of the things you learn when you are in politics or observing politics, is that issues really never boil down to black and white, even though on the outside, it appears that they should and decisions should be easy. And so many of us here bring so much thought to what we do, and research, and a high degree of integrity, and Jane, you are, I think, a magnificent example of a public servant, and it means that you take the hits, but it also means tonight that we give you all the love and appreciation that you deserve, so thank you.
Thank you, Lauren Glendavidian. And I'm just so glad that I did not have to caution Channel 17's Lauren Glendavidian to use the microphone. Charles Delaney is up next, to be followed by Barb Alsop. Mr. Delaney, going once, going twice, Barb Alsop. Good evening, Ms. Alsop, and welcome.
My name's Barbara Alsop, and I live right across the park, at 125 St. Paul Street, so the park is my front lawn. But before I get to that, I want to thank Brian Pine for nominating Julie, Julia DiPietro-
DiPietro.
Thank you, to take the place that I won as inspector of elections, I think she's a wonderful choice, and I think she'll be a great inspector of elections. But with regard to City Hall Park, when I read the news that the cost had gone up over $6 million, I had a question, and that question was, where's the money coming from? And how much of city services that are necessary will not be done because we're building City Hall Park? I walk everywhere, since I don't have a car, and I walk over city sidewalks that are literally unwalkable in the winter. The residents carve out walkways through the snow to avoid the ice and the slush caused by damaged sidewalks. This hasn't changed in the last eight years that I have lived in downtown Burlington, but we can find $6 million to fix a park? I don't think so. I think there are more things that need to be done to make this city livable for the people who live here than to put the money into the park. I also want to make a suggestion, that this being voted on by this council, which is going to be changed by one-fourth of its members at the next meeting, is sort of like a lame duck session, and we all know what the Republicans do with lame duck sessions in-
Finish, finish your, no, you can finish your sentence.
In Washington, let's not do it here.
Thank you, Ms. Alsop. Ardy Jones is up next, to be followed by Kathleen Ryan.
Andy.
Mr. Jones, welcome.
I guess that tells you something about my handwriting.
Oh, what did, I'm sorry, what did-
That's okay.
What, what, what did it say?
Andy.
Oh, sorry, Andy Jones.
Thank you.
I stand corrected.
My name's Andy Jones, I've been farm manager at Intervale Community Farm for the last 25 years, and I'm here to speak to item 4.02, which relates to pedestrian and cycling access for Intervale Road. When I first came to the Intervale in 1993, it was, it was kind of a, a little bit of a dodgy place, and there weren't a lot of people in Burlington that knew about it. If you look at it today, it's an incredible resource for the city of Burlington, for all of its residents and people beyond. It's incredible for recreation, natural spaces, open, open areas, food production, employment on all sorts of levels, from my farm, where we employ 15 people, and we have 1,200 to 1,500 consumers a week come down in the summer, to lots of other places, the Summervale events hosted by our landlord, the Intervale Center, Gardener Supply, McNeil, and the list goes on, Tommy Thompson Community Gardens. Unfortunately, everybody has to drive there, because it's incredibly dangerous coming down the hill with no sidewalk, no bike lanes, road that's in terrible condition. We have teachers who want to bring school groups to the Intervale, who won't. They walk, and they, after they do it once, they never do it again, so I would urge you to support the transportation improvements necessary to make Intervale Road safe for bicyclists and pedestrians, and to really take the Intervale into the 21st century, and make it a place that'll be a cornerstone of Burlington's public resources for decades to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, and it said more about my eyesight than your handwriting. Kathleen Ryan is up next, to be followed by Charles Messing, Charlie Messing. Good evening, Ms. Ryan, welcome.
I've been a resident of Burlington 42 years, and I'm a landscape architect, I've worked here as a landscape architect. I just got the news that there are, there's going to be major quality modifications to this park design. I'm not in favor of this design, I think it's a good design, but I'm really was concerned when the historic design was thrown out lock, stock, and barrel. There was no resemblance of this design to its historic background, historic design. But what it did have going for it was the quality. Keith Wagner's a very good designer, and he, and I know he used the best materials and the best quality, and to turn around at this point in time and throw out the granite, I know, I heard secondhand that, ah, the public works or whoever has made this decision said concrete will be fine, they will put additives in it, it will be great, it won't be great. In 10 years, it won't be great. The granite would be there, the granite would last, so unless you want to redesign this park and rebuild this park in 10 years, I think you ought to really think twice.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Charlie Messing is up next, to be followed by Jill Allen. Mr. Messing, come on down. Welcome.
Not that much time, I won't do all the introductions this time. Hello, everybody, those I remember, Dave Hartnett, we'll miss you, along with Joan, and, well, you gave an impassioned speech once about making the park more accessible, ADA accessible, and mistakenly thinking that moving the path over will make it more accessible, but that's not the point. What's the point? You'll be surprised to find all my friends are taking care of the park issue. I want to talk about the free College Street shuttle bus. It's been there for a long time, and it's very important to the ADA public, the tourists, the children, the college kids, all the senior citizens in my building, who, it being 7:00, 8:00, they are in bed, but I'm here to speak for them, and they're all very concerned. It's a free bus, it's very important, it goes straight to the hospital, and the plan is now, by GMT, to change it in August, to change it to being charged and not even going up College Street. It's going to start at the waterfront, go to the bus terminal, go to the hospital, go to the mall, go to the airport, and it's just, and of course, it's money. They have not raised their fares since 2005. What do you know that has not increased in price since 2005? Nothing. It's their mistake, and they must fix that, and keep the free College Street bus, it is one of the gems in the crown of the Queen City.
Thank you, Mr. Messing, that was perfect.
Thank you.
Perfect timing, we got the little wave hand at the light and everything, should have been in acting. Jill Allen is up next, to be followed by Wiley, I think, reading. Good evening, and welcome.
Hi. My name is Jill Allen, and I'm here to urge this city council not to vote on a bid to reconstruct City Hall Park at this meeting. We're called the Green Mountain State, and we're called the Green Mountain State for a reason, because we like greenery, or at least, that's what I thought, until I saw plans that indicated putting a splash pad in and paving the park. And that, that really disturbs me, because I live in subsidized housing, and there isn't very much greenery around where I live. So I go to Burlington Parks to experience the green, and if this park gets paved and a splash pad gets put in, then you lose the green. It's like paving paradise and putting up a parking lot, like that song says. And I, one of the things that I and many Vermonters value is, is the city and the state's natural beauty. I mean, that's what we sell to tourists. And if we construct this park whose cost keeps on ballooning and ballooning and ballooning, the message that we're sending is that we don't care about our beautiful green state. We care about building higher and higher buildings. And I don't know about you, but that's not the message I want to send to tourists. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Wiley Reading is up next, to be followed by Lynn Martin. Good evening and welcome.
So, I have a lot to say about the park, but I think the most important thing is that, one of the things I love about living in Burlington is that as, you know, stuff, terrifying, horrible stuff happens on the national level and seems to get kind of pushed through with very little resistance, seems like Burlington, there's a lot of, like, checks to people shoving things through. There's a lot, sometimes it's really annoying, there's a lot of public outcry over pretty much every issue. But it comforts me, honestly, because it means that things don't, decisions don't get made overnight, and we don't wake up, you know, one morning to find that something that we really, really don't want has been done. And it seems like this is, that's happening right now. It's, you know, the, the public clearly is very conflicted about this park, and yet it didn't go on the ballot, we didn't get a chance to vote on it, and now it's being voted on again and, and being tried to push through. And I think it's pretty clear that people don't feel great about it. Maybe some people do, but not everybody. And I don't like the idea that we're ignoring a large contingent of the population, and I think that it, it's a slippery slope to pushing more and more things that the people generally don't want. So, I urge you to consider that, the fact that there's a lot of anger and frustration and just not wanting this plan amongst the people of Burlington when you, when you take your vote.
Thank you very much. Lynn Martin is up next, to be followed by Wayne Senville. Good evening, Ms. Martin. Welcome.
Good evening to you. I'm going to speak on a personal note here for the park instead of facts, because I have done this now for three years, and I found that I have internalized the park, it would appear, in a way that made me rather chuckle. I recently rented an office at 86 St. Paul Street, and I was trying to figure out how to do the interior. And I thought, well, you know, I'm a therapist, and people have roots, and they have branches in their lives, and all, so I started off with one rather large tree on the wall, which is eight feet wide, it's a wall decal, eight feet wide and about eight feet tall, no, nine feet wide and eight feet tall. Anyhow, it now has three trees, several branches, a lot of birds, and for all the world reminds me of the park. And I realized I have brought my sadness about City Hall Park and tried to make it meaningful, because I'm thinking it may, we may lose it, and I hope not. I sincerely hope not. But the peace from the nature in my, in my, with my fake trees on my walls, the clients have had a positive experience, I want to, it's like being in a grove of trees. I have lights up, plants with flowers, and I don't want to lose that outside in the park. Please leave us our park. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Wayne, Wayne Senville is up next, to be followed by Richard Hilliard. Good evening, Mr. Senville. Welcome.
Good evening. First of all, a quick thanks to the departing council members who have also put up with long emails from me over the last years. So, thank you for, for your service on the council. At this afternoon's finance board meeting, a half a million dollars in changes, last-minute changes to the City Hall Park Plan were announced, largely, apparently, from what I gathered, to reduce the quality of the materials. It's hard to know for sure what all the changes are, because this afternoon's roughly 15-minute presentation was the first opportunity any member of the public, and probably any city councillor, had to review or learn about a whole series of changes to the park design, just 15 minutes for that. As some of you know, I served on the planning commission for 11 years. I served on the development review board for, for two years more recently. These many changes to the City Hall Park design, again, first set out just two hours ago, or three hours ago, call into question the validity of the current development approval of the park plan, and I believe will require the development review board permit to be modified before any work can proceed. I hope you take this into account before you rush into voting to approve the construction contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Senville. Richard Hilliard is up next, to be followed by Maxine Holmes. Good evening, Mr. Hilliard, and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Just like to start off by thanking Councillors Dean and, and Hartnett for their service on the city council. And one of the things about appreciating what people do is you don't necessarily agree with them all the time. So, I appreciate your discussions in, in good faith. But having said that, I completely agree with everything that's been said by the Keep the Park Green crew on City Hall Park. I won't go on about that, but would request funds in the fiscal year budget for 2020 to divert some of the money that you've got earmarked for the park to the barn at Shemanska Park, which has been institutionally neglected and can no longer be used for neighborhood On a professional note, I, I don't understand why we can't get good bids in this city. Who runs the contracts? We've had the nonsense with City Hall Park. We've got St. Paul Street dug up. We can't seem to get any straight answers out of Sinex or Rous or Brook, Brookfield. So this may work in government, but it doesn't work in business, and I've seen people invited to shovel manure for much less. The public deserves competent financial management, integrity in council and city hall, and that transparency must be a principle and not a buzzword.
Thank you, Mr. Hilliard. Max --
Just say one other thing in response to the gentleman from the Intervale. About eight, eight or 10 years ago, DPW found that the part of Intervale Road going down past the railway tracks was not in the city's software, and I recommend to both Director Spencer and the gentleman here that they investigate that, because if that wasn't rectified, that may have something to do with the condition of the road.
Thank you, Mr. Hilliard. Maxine Holmes is up next, to be followed by Eric Hoekstra. Good evening, again.
Thanks for hearing me again. I was very upset about the park when it first was proposed, the changes, and I'm even more upset now about the extra money that has to be spent. As a taxpayer in Burlington, I'm very upset that we're spending that kind of money on a park that really doesn't need all those changes. And places where we need help, such as after-school programs, as I was mentioning before, initiating this Icelandic program, if you can, hopefully, in Burlington, requires buildings and spaces to be used for people in terms of groups and inside in the winter. For example, Memorial Auditorium, I'd prefer the money being spent, instead of putting a parking garage in Memorial Auditorium, which I heard is going to happen, I'd rather see it be kept as an open space for people to play and to get together and do sports. I'm sorry, but I think we're, our priorities are, are mixed up here. I, I really don't approve, and I would urge you not to vote on this. Yes, and I, I would prefer that it goes to the voters with the increased amount of money and see what they have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holmes. Eric Hoekstra is up next, to be followed by Amanda Hannaford, Andrew Champagne, and Jim Lockridge, and Lizzie Haskell, together from the Wards 2 and 3 MPA. Mr. Hoekstra, welcome.
Thank you, Councillor Wright. Chairperson Wright, I should say. I, I might be alone, but I actually like the idea of City Hall Park, but that's not why I'm here tonight. I'm here tonight as a 17-year resident of Ward 2 and a business owner in the city to thank Jane Nodel for her long service to the city council and the community. Jane's been an important leader in our community for more than 30 years, serving on, many of those years, on the city council and sometimes as the city council chair. Jane's been an independent voice that has worked across party lines to advocate for what she believes is in the best interests of the city. She's been an advocate for socioeconomic equity, and Jane has particularly focused on the most vulnerable among us, working on behalf of low-income families, seniors, and individuals on initiatives such as permit reform, fair and impartial policing, sponsoring dumpster days in the Old North End, sponsoring a resolution to push back on the waste districts' closure of the reuse zones, working on inclusionary housing, working on behalf of the family room as it's separated from the VNA, and sponsoring the creation of the Senior Center Study to make sure that seniors have stable services citywide. Jane's been an advocate for smart growth, supporting development projects in the city led by private sector, nonprofit, and public sector developers. Like most strong leaders, Jane's made tough decisions on behalf of the city, many times when finding herself and, and the city caught between a rock and a hard place. I think we will all welcome Perry Freeman to the council in April and also acknowledge the enormous shoes she will have to fill when she joins this group. More than anything, I want to thank Jane for being my friend, and I'm comforted to know that Jane will work as a strong leader in the community, and that work is far from over. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hoekstra. Come on up, crew from the Ward 2 and 3 MPA.
Hey, hey, everybody. How you doing? We're here to lighten the mood a little bit, okay? My name's Andrew Champagne. I'm here with fellow members of the Wards 2 and 3 MPA. Hello to the mayor, hello to the city councillors, and to distinguished guests here. Thank you so much for coming. We have a three-part presentation, and I'd like to start it off by saying that we are obviously parts of Wards, Wards 2 and 3 MPA, and that's the only MPA that offers a dinner, so it's a really great thing. And we would like to thank and acknowledge Jane's many years, how about 20 years, of service to our neighborhood and to all of Burlington.
Jane has stayed committed to the work of city council through the most challenging times and issues, and we're all grateful for her willingness to be a part of the MPA experience, connecting city politics to our neighborhoods. We wish her the best in her next adventure.
And at the last MPA, which Jane was out of the country for, so she wasn't here, we, Melissa Kane made a sign, and it turned out that we needed three of them, because so many people signed it. So, they say, they say, "Thank you, Jane," signed by the members of, the attendees and members of the MPA. We also, this is from Liz Curry, who had to leave, and she just wanted to say thank you and give you flowers also.
Jane, so we'd like to present you with the flowers and these three cards and our, and our blessings. So, thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Cindy Turcot. I am the president at Gardener Supply Company, an employee-owned company, and we moved to the Intervale to turn it into the agricultural haven and, and do a lot of the work that was done to get it to where it is now, the beginning of it anyways. We have 150 employees right now that are driving on Intervale Road. So, not only do we want to support the footpath that's there, but we also need a road that we can drive down. We have customers now, we're going into busy season, and the customers are already complaining about how difficult it is to come down the road right now. It's basically one way as you go down, if any of you have been on there. It's really, really difficult to get down there. And it makes it near impossible for the pedestrians and the foot, the foot, bicycles, all of them that are trying to get down into the Intervale, which is a beautiful place for them to spend time. And you've got the CSA, you have the McNeil plant, we have trucks coming in bringing stuff. So, it's basically just, we're out there giving our support to improving the road and improving what needs to happen for the foot traffic there, and we're in complete support of having that foot traffic there. So, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Paul Buschner is up next, to be followed by Carolyn Bates. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. So, as a Burlington resident and a business owner, I wanted just to encourage the council to move forward on City Hall Park. I will say, the current status of the park, in my opinion, is unacceptable. Living with the status quo isn't something that as a community we should consider doing. I will also say that I was, was very dismayed to hear the, the increase in cost, although I am assuming, as with most projects of this nature, the cost will never go down. To do it properly, the cost will never go down. So, if this is what it takes, then let's go ahead and, and do that. However, would also encourage the council to look at ways, without reducing the quality of bringing that cost down. Perhaps, I don't have the line item of what each, each thing that goes into that project costs, but perhaps taking out the water feature, the Popjet Fountain, something of that nature, as opposed to compromising on materials. But I would leave it to you is how, how that could work, but I would strongly support going forward at this time to redo the park, make it a welcoming place for the farmer's market, and for the, and to invite the community and to use it as a resource.
Thank you, Mr. Buschner. Carolyn Bates is up next, to be followed by Jessica Oski. Good evening, Ms. Bates.
Good evening. It's so much fun to have someone say good evening to you, and I would like to also say to thank you to all of you and for the city councillors who are going to leave. When I'm through speaking, I think we ought to do a standing ovation for all of them, not, I mean, I love Jane.
Well, we've got, we've got more stuff coming that we're going to do ceremonies on.
All right. I want to just be sure they're fairly treated. And with me and City Hall Park, you know, when I first started with the City Hall Park and listening to you guys, it was $500,000 for maintenance and $500,000 for a creative, inclusive splash park, so the handicapped kids, including Ben Wood Lewis, could use a great place to play. And unfortunately, it went underground for four or five years, and then 2016, we suddenly get a new plan and a new budget. It's now around $3 million, but that supposedly also includes a million-dollar donation. I think we need to pause our City Hall Park Plan, just like the mall's paused, just like the Moran has been paused. We need instead to start immediately to remediate all of those trees before any more die. That is the most valuable resource we have for shade and air pollution, et cetera, et cetera. We need to remediate those trees. And then I think we need to really sit down with a design that works and find new designers or redesign with the people who are here and keep them to a budget of $3 million plus -- whatever we get in donations and allotments. And that they have to stay in that budget. I don't know why that wasn't done before. I have just no clue or why they kept creating and never telling us that there was a new cost. It was right up front. We need to keep all the remaining trees. We need to be sure that if we put in a splash pad, it's creative. Thank you. Is that the end of me? Thank you.
The end of you. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Bates. Jessica Oski, to be followed by Mike Long.
Thank you, Mr. President. I like saying that. I want to take a minute or two that I have, as a longtime resident of Burlington, to thank Councilor Nodelle for her years of service, tireless and thankless service to the city of Burlington. Councilor Nodelle's years of experience, her brilliant mind, her patience, her integrity, her strategic thinking, her progressive values of inclusion, fairness, and transparency, her deep love for the people of the city, and most importantly, her mad leadership skills will be sorely missed by this counselor, by this council. Councilor Nodelle leaves a huge hole that won't be filled anytime soon. In my opinion, Councilor Nodelle is even a greater loss by a nose to this city than it would be for the city to lose you, President Wright, which hopefully won't be happening anytime soon. Thank you, Councilor Nodelle. I will miss your leadership, but I will look forward to your future contributions to the city, which now can be schemed on Monday nights.
Thank you, Jessica. Michael Long, welcome.
Good evening, and thank you again. Just three things strike me about the park plan. The park plan was secretive, heavy on hardscape, and exorbitantly priced to begin with, and now it has morphed into a plan costing millions more than advertised. Also, 3,300 voters urged reconsideration of this plan, far more than typically vote to elect a city councilor. And a third item strikes me is that this is the last meeting of the city council as currently configured, and three of the four whose seats were contested this month will no longer be councilors next week, because in at least half of the four two-ward legislative districts, voters have resoundingly chosen new councilors to represent them. It would seem that no rational analysis could conclude that tonight is the night to approve a divisive, controversial, and fiscally stressed park plan. Each and all of the factors noted above make it incumbent upon the council to refrain from any approval of the park plan tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Karen Long is up next, to be followed by Steve Goodkind. Good evening, Ms. Long. Welcome.
Thank you. There's not a lot left to say, but I do come because I'm super frustrated with our sidewalks, the sidewalks that we need to walk to school, we need to walk to work, we need to walk shopping, out to dinner, whatever. Yet, we're talking about tearing up the sidewalks in City Hall Park, and I've walked all those sidewalks. And in the center of the park, there is one that has a big section of cement missing, but if you walk on Union, Loomis, Winuski, Pearl, any of the streets around here, probably every, you know, I mean, there's just huge, huge amount of very unwalkable sidewalks. So that is a huge, like, frustration to me that we have $6.2 million to tear up the historic park that many, many people love, get rid of the tree, 50% of the trees that are providing shade. I mean, again, you've heard this and heard this, but I just don't get it. So please reject this plan. Most designers, and I've been in the design business for 40 years, do have a bit of a budget. We paid $750,000 for this design, and if the plan was going to be $3 to $4 million, that is 25% design fee. I mean, I've never made that much money on a design fee. I doubt Richard Dean has either. Like, that would be building a $500,000 house, and you pay your architect $125,000. I mean, we were really misled with this, and please, it's no reason to go ahead with it just because we already wasted $750,000. So our streets are crumbling, our sidewalks are bad, and you need to serve us more than we need to serve, you know, tourists that might think a splash pad is fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Steve Goodkind is up next, to be followed by Kelly Devine. Good evening, Mr. Goodkind. Welcome.
Good evening, and thank you, President Wright, and Councilors Nodelle and Hartnett. During my time as city engineer and public works director, I was responsible for scores of capital projects, and I know an unsuccessful bid process when I see one. And I think it's time for the city to recognize, for various reasons and maybe even for all good intentions, that the bidding process so far for City Hall Park has been totally unsuccessful, and it should not be a basis for moving ahead. We should learn some lessons from it. I think by now, most people recognize it needs additional design work, it needs value engineering, and not just work done over a few weekends, but it needs a serious effort. Under no circumstance should either of the two bids become the basis for a contract, a negotiated contract for construction. They're way out of line. My personal feeling is neither of them were actually a serious bid, and they've seen it before. I think these were thrown out there, and I don't think either contractor intended to get this job, and they should not become the basis for that. I think you've got to have the courage to go back and let this process go through like a normal project. Only for political reasons would this thing go forward. It makes no financial or engineering sense to use what you have now. It's time just to go back, take a breath, and do this right, and by no means to just negotiate a quick contract and go forward. You're asking for nothing but trouble. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodkind. Kelly Devine is up next, to be followed by our final speaker, Suzy Sugar. Good evening, Ms. Devine.
Good evening.
You have your voice back.
I know, but just barely, right? So I sent in some written remarks, so I won't go to the trouble of having the audience listen to them all, but we've been involved in this City Hall Park project since 2009, I think, and in main part because I do think that a city as wonderful as Burlington needs a great green space, and I don't think we have that now with the existing City Hall Park. There are significant drainage issues with the park. There are stormwater runoff issues, and my organization's also really concerned about lake health. And so we need to do something. I'm really not in any position to comment on the budget because I haven't looked at it in any depth, but I do know that we did have an extensive process, we did have a vote by the city council to move forward on the project, and I do hope that the council can find a way to continue to move it forward tonight. I did get an opportunity to take a look at the amendments, and one thing that our organization has also been working on is, along with Council Roof, is this initiative to try to make more public bathrooms available in the community. So if the council does see fit to remove that item tonight, I hope that we can continue that work because we do know from pretty much, maybe one of the few issues that I think the community is really united on is that we do need more public bathrooms available for downtown. So I would urge the council to move forward, and I have 27 seconds left to say that it's been my honor to work with Councilor Nodelle, Councilor Hartnett, Councilor Dean. You guys have just done an amazing service to the community, some of you for many, many years, other you for a shorter period of time, but it's just been a real honor to work with you, and thank you so much for your service.
Thank you very much, Ms. Devine. Suzy Sugar is up next, to be followed by our final speaker, Patrick Dunzith. Good evening. Welcome.
In the chair. Good evening. I'm Suzy Sugar. I'm here to hug our park trees and our collective wallets. I've been here once before. It was to speak out against the massive construction downtown, and I'm here again for the same reason. For every person speaking out, there are dozens and dozens and dozens who have elected you to represent them, who are wondering, how come with 3,300 people signing a petition, this is not being decided in a democratic process? I wasn't entirely against the construction downtown. I'm not a hold-on to things that need work. I think there is some work to be done in the park, but the costs here, I think, are exceeding the return to the community, especially when we think about having fewer potential vendors at our famous farmer's market. That's so upsetting to me. In a town where you can't add an extension onto your driveway because you're adding more concrete, we're thinking about adding a massive amount of concrete, and that just confounds me. No one is moving to Burlington because of that park. Let's be clear here. We have other pressing issues in our community, and no one is skipping our farmer's market because of that park. So I would say, let's try to figure out some better things to work on, let's reprioritize, and let's maybe regroup and reject this proposal for now and do better as a community. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sugar. The final speaker tonight is Patrick Dunzith. Mr. Dunzith, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Patrick Dunzith. I'm the land manager at the Intervale Center, and I'm here just to speak briefly to the bicycle and pedestrian access study. Intervale Road is the point of access to the largest contiguous block of open space in the city at its southern end, and this landscape and the Intervale Center's role in managing that landscape are key contributors to the city's reputation as a sustainable and green city. The Intervale continues to rank as favorite outdoor space to Burlington residents, and your support for this road study will continue to show a commitment from the city as a sustainable and green city. We believe at the Intervale Center that local food and recreation and open space are all huge draws to Burlington and contribute to folks moving to Burlington to work and live. As a testament to that, we've just completed a fundraising for a million-dollar capital campaign to enhance the amenities that we provide to the public for free, including trails, gardens, meaningful opportunities to connect with sustainable agriculture and food. There are CSA pickups, there's scientific research between UVM and extension, and meaningful opportunities to be employed in agriculture. So like I said, we're committed to providing these amenities to the city, but we need the city's support to do that in an equitable and safe manner. I'd also like to say too that we are committed to supporting this in whatever way possible, and we plan to establish a roadside path as part of this, which we'll see in the scoping study as a contribution.
Thank you, Mr. Dunzith. And with that, we will close out the public forum, and I will look for a motion on the consent agenda before going to item number six. Councilor Nodelle.
Yes, President Wright, I move that we adopt the consent agenda as amended and take the actions indicated.
Thank you, Councilor Nodelle, seconded by Councilor Busher. All those in favor of the motion to pass the consent agenda and take the actions indicated, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have passed the consent agenda. And now we will go to item number six, which is city councilors on general city affairs. And I'm going to take the, I'm going to start on this one. So these flowers are from the city council for our departing city councilors, but even more for the city councilors, they're for your spouses. Councilor Busher started this really many years ago, and so it is our way of saying thank you to your better halves for allowing you to spend all this time here with us, and on your constituents' behalf and on Burlington's behalf, we really appreciate it. And we do have one spouse that is actually here tonight, Lisa Hartnett over here, and I just got to say, if anybody deserves a dozen roses, it's Lisa Hartnett. I think we could all agree on that. Yeah, so let's start with Councilor Hartnett.
Well, thank you, and surprised, but happy to see her.
If you want to blame it on anybody, Councilor Hartnett, I got her here.
That's okay. All through the community, for all the years I've been on the council and the Parks Commission, and all the people I've dealt with, and they've met, obviously, me, and they've met my daughter Katie a lot, and that famous question would always come up, Dave, is there really a Lisa Hartnett? There is a Lisa Hartnett, and if it wasn't for Lisa Hartnett and my daughter Katie, I would have never been able to serve the eight years on this council. They literally have been my strength, my inspiration for me to do this. They've been my partners. It's been incredible to have them by my side through the eight years. It's been one of the most unbelievable experiences in my life. Other than being a dad, I would say it tops the list. I would certainly like to thank the people of the New North End who have supported me in so many ways, just not at the ballot box, but my entire family, and embraced us in good times and in bad times, and we have developed a partnership out there that we have been through a lot together. I'll never forget their gratitude. I will continue to work hard and advocate for the people in the North End. It's a very special place to live, and I've enjoyed it so much. I also would like to thank my mom, who is probably listening and watching on TV, and I got my standard call at 6:30 tonight to say, behave yourself. I'm watching. It's amazing to have a mom that's 90 years old and has enjoyed city politics as much as she has, has worked at the polls, who loves this city as much as I do, has been at the same house on Brick Sad for 57 years, and it's just been an incredible run to have her part of this as well. And also, I'd like to thank my sister Mary, who is the youngest in the family out of eight, and the only daughter, who has given my mom the most quality of life anybody could ever ask for. And from our brother's standpoint of view, and for the rest of my brothers, to be able to know that your mom is getting a quality life at the age of 90 and is being well taken care of, and that has allowed me to serve here on this council, I would like to thank my sister Mary. So thank you for that. And lastly, the city clerk's office and their staff, for all the work they've done for me over the last eight years. You guys have been great. I appreciated it so much, and I'm going to miss you, but I'll be down to visit, and hopefully it's just a short tender away from politics. I'd like to come back and serve. I love this city. It's amazing. I've said this 1,000 times, I'll say it one more time tonight. I think Councilor Paul and Councilor Mason can relate to this, but there is nothing more humbling to grow up in this great city, attend public schools, play Baja hockey, Little League baseball, whatever it might be, run a business for nearly 20 years, have your family grow up here, have your daughter go to the same school you did, and then be able to come back and serve your community. There is nothing more humbling than that. I appreciate it. I love this city, and I think we're in a good place, and I hope to be working with you guys down the road. Thank you very much.
Councilor Shannon, or Councilor Dean? Councilor Dean?
Thank you, President. I don't think I can top that. It's a moment now, and I'd like to note that this is probably a, you know, it's not my choice to be leaving this council. I've only spent a short time here, but I want to say thank you to my constituents who have supported me and given me projects to work on during the time that I've been as part of this council. I really hope, you know, that this has really been a lesson to me about city government and how important we all are, and all of you are, to making, to understanding the needs of the city and making the voice. of the city and making the voices of our constituents heard. So I'd also like to say what a lesson it has been for me in the past two years about how complex this city is and how dedicated our city staff is to making this city go. I have seen them in action. I've worked with DPW on a number of issues. It's a really complex mechanism. I didn't learn it all, but I do understand how important it is, the dedication of the people who work for us to making this city a place that we like to be in and like to live. And of course, I have to offer a thanks to my family and particularly to my wife. I will be welcomed, I think, with those dozen roses. I may not quite be enough. I may have to do some more dinners to make this up, but it has been, and I think everyone should know that every one of the members of this council makes significant sacrifices to be part, to provide public service, to be public servants. And finally, I would say thank you to all my city council colleagues. It has been an amazing experience to learn from you, to understand the depth of knowledge that you have about this city and to try to keep up. And I know that I haven't quite done that as best as I would hope for myself, but you are a real inspiration to me. I'm, you know, sorry to be leaving and not having the opportunity to continue to work with you, but I do plan to stay engaged with the city. You will see me back here on occasions when things are important. And I thank you for all of the lessons that you've taught me over the past two years.[706.13][706.13](Applause).
Thank you, Counselor Dean. Counselor Shannon?
Thank you, President Wright. There's been a long tradition on the city council of giving councilors plaques when they are departing the council. But I understand that this year, the cost of the plaques is being donated to City Hall Park.[748.81][748.81](Laughter). And I didn't...
Good one, Counselor Shannon.
But I didn't want our departing councilors to go without. And I spend a lot of time with high schoolers these days and I notice that what they do to honor their fellow teammates in most cases is they give paper plate awards. So I'm sorry to say that I came up with my paper plate awards ideas at about 5:45 tonight. And I think I failed art class, but I did the very best that I could. And I'd like to start with Counselor Dean. Counselor Dean, you really have brought an intelligence and your heart and soul to this effort. And I've learned a lot from you and I think the council has greatly benefited from your skills and your courage when you, you know, you were one of the first councilors really to get on board with the idea of renovating our high school, which was a hard decision for us. And we've had many hard decisions along the way. But you've really used both your intelligence and your heart in the decisions that you have made. And for that reason, you... You are going to get the Tin Man and Scarecrow Award.[838.13][838.13](Laughter). So thank you very much.[841.13][841.13](Applause).
Thank you, Counselor Shannon.
Counselor Hartnett, you're the one who fears me most, I suspect. There's a lot of things I could say, but it's all on videotape.[858.82][858.82](Laughter). Except there's a few things that are not on videotape. And one of them is the work that you do outside of this room. And probably a lot of people know that you knock on a lot of doors because a lot of people must have answered those doors, including people in South Burlington. He cannot stop. He does not stop in the New North End. He doesn't stop at his own campaigns. He knocks for a lot of other people's campaigns, probably all over the city. But he has even gone so far as to knock on doors in South Burlington. And for that, you will get the Door Knocker Award, first place.[904.25][904.25](Laughter). Counselor Nodel, you might fear me a little bit, but not as much as Counselor Hartnett. I have always admired your courage. We all make a lot of hard decisions on this, on this council. And as has been recognized by the public tonight and others, a lot of times the answers seem very simple and they're not. And it's been difficult and you have stood up for what you believe in. In Burlington, I think that we all know that we stand up against racism and sexism and all the other isms. There's an ism that has not yet been identified, at least in like terminology and a word for it. And you've stood up against that too. In other communities, it might not be deserving of an award, but in Burlington it is. And I think that Counselor Wright should open that and you can present that award to Counselor Nodel. You can pull it out, pull it out. It's wet, which is why it's in there. The glue didn't dry. Sorry.
My friend is a Republican and I'm not afraid to admit it.[989.51][989.51](Laughter). I think maybe she should have been afraid.[1009.01][1009.01](Laughter). Although, one correction. First of all, Counselor Shannon, that's a pretty darn good job for 5:45 today.
Yes, it is.
I got to say, the only thing I'd correct is I don't think Counselor Nodel is afraid of anything.[1024.80][1024.80](Laughter). But, okay, great job, Counselor Shannon. Who's up, who's up next? Counselor Pine?
I should have yielded the floor to Counselor Nodel, Mr. President. Did she want her to go in that order? Okay, all right. I don't want to speak long because it's getting on there and we have a lot of business ahead, but I want to thank each councillor by just saying almost a word that I think will typify their service or something that they can be proud of and I want this community to know that. And I actually think that Counselor Dean, we have to thank for the, Counselor Shannon mentioned the high school, but I really think at the most pivotal moment, when the decision could go either way, Counselor Dean spoke up at a time when it wasn't the most popular thing to do, but he did it in a way that was, brought everyone along and brought us to the point where we're going to have basically a new high school for the youth of Burlington. So I will always think of him as that person who was there at that pivotal moment. Counselor Hartnett, before he even got on the council, I used to actually fight with Counselor Hartnett over balls and strikes and stuff at Little League. But then I got to know him better. And Dave came once and spoke before he was a councillor that Burlington needed a place where homeless people who couldn't quit whatever substance they were abusing could go. And Dave said, we're going to get a warming shelter at some point. And I thought to myself, now there's somebody who's driven by a certain set of values, but I'm not sure he's realistic about that. We may never see a warming shelter. And I got to give Dave credit because we do have a warming shelter, partly due to his advocacy. And I want to thank him for that. Counselor Nodel, I actually, I've noted for so long that I have a long list, but I'm just going to say, Jane's ability to take an issue and dig as deep as possible and then look at all of us and say, we actually have to go a little bit deeper to get to the root of the issue, has always amazed me. And that Jane's ability to do that in a way that is respectful of people with different opinions and gets us to a point where we as a group can come together is something that I'll miss a lot. So I just want to thank her for that.
Counselor Nodel.
Thank you, President Wright. I feel really overwhelmed. And I just want to say I'm happy I didn't put my mascara on tonight because, you know, it'd be a real big mess. Just want to really appreciate, and I'm just so humbled by everything that people have said in public forum and that my colleagues have said. And this is a very strong and effective city councillor and it's council. And I'm really impressed with the work that we've gotten done in the last two years. I'm extremely humbled and appreciative that people have voted for me and have trusted me to represent them. And it is extremely important work. And it is, we should not take a high functioning city council and a high functioning city government for granted. Now, if people can hold on to the end of the meeting, I have a few more substantive remarks to make, but I'm going to keep it at this for now and just say, thank you so much. Thank you to Ted. Thank you to Jassy. And thank you, thank you to the mayor. We've had our ups and downs and I greatly, greatly admire your hard work, your work ethic, and you, you never give up. And I think that's, that's important in this business.
Anyone else on the council? Counselor Busher?
Yes, I won't take a lot of time, but I just wanted to say briefly something about each councillor. I'll start with Counselor Dean. I, we've been together on some really difficult issues. And I, you are a rational voice, a really good listener, come up with really good possible solutions. And I really valued that. And I think that the trio for Ward One and Eight, Adam, Richard and me, we were a good trio and we served that NPA well. And they will miss your voice. And so thank you very much. And I just wanted to let you know that. Dave, you're amazing in so many ways. You're scary sometimes for me. You're passionate. And so sometimes you bring me back to, and I'm going to compare you to someone maybe you'll like or not, but to Mayor Sanders, when I would sit here and he would be sitting across where the mayor is right now and I would be sitting where Brian is and he would make some statement and it would be, oh my God, I'd be so mortified. I'd want to hide under the desk. And then other times, his insights and his awareness and he had his finger on the pulse and that's you. You're a mix of sometimes some things that are maybe not so right and other things,[1366.13][1366.13](Laughter) some things that are really spot on. And really, I think back to the serious issue with the unfortunate death in the New North End with a person who was having mental health issues. And I, and I look to you as to beginning the dialogue between police and people with mental health issues to make it safer and better so the outcomes wouldn't be always what happened there. And I will never forget that. And the other thing, I will never, I won't hear an ad without thinking of you. And that ad will be, guess what day it is?
It's hump day![1411.13][1411.13](Laughter).
Because of the interruption for poor Megan Tuttle in the presentation. She's coming back tonight, so let's hope this doesn't happen again. But anyways, Dave, it's been a pleasure sitting beside you and you had your roots in Ward One, as you know, as did Richard Dean.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I'm taking more time than I said. I'm sorry, President Wright. It's really hard to, to really put into words my relationship with Jane or Counselor Nodel. We are the yin and the yang of the council. I say too much, she's very succinct. We have very different styles and yet we have found a working relationship that I think has benefited the Board of Finance and the council and the community. I really, really value, I think Brian Pine said that too. I'm calling people by their names because that's what I feel this is about. We're people, not councillors right now. I feel that Brian was absolutely right at the depth that Jane, when Jane at the Board of Finance, when there's an issue, she will go get, well research it and then come and ask questions. They're not frivolous questions. They're meaningful questions that really just move us to a better place and that will be missed. I really want to thank you so much for everything you've done and your friendship. So thank you very much.[1505.63][1505.63](Applause).
Thank you, Counselor Busher. Counselor Tracy?
Thank you, President Wright. So I just want to say a few words about each councillor because I've had some great interactions with each of you individually. I'll start with Counselor Dean. I very much enjoyed serving on the License Committee with you. I certainly appreciate the fairness and the eye towards safety that you've had on that committee. In addition to that, I very much appreciate and value what you did with the Burlington Wildways. I think that that is probably your biggest achievement on this council and one that Burlington will be grateful for for generations to come in the sense that it will, I think, lead to not only making, not only preserving beautiful open spaces, but also making them more usable in a way that's sustainable for Burlington residents. So thank you very much for that. Counselor Hartnett, I, you've been an incredible sparring partner, especially on issues of having to do with transportation. I know we see things very differently when it comes to that, but I think in that, in that sparring and in that conversation, you've taught me a lot, not only about those issues and helped me to sort of check my own, my own perspective, giving me sort of reason to think deeper and to really see it from the other side. But you've also helped to educate me about your neighborhood and the people that you represent up in the New North End. And I think that this council will sorely miss your stores, your stores' eye view that you prevent, that you present to this council. I think that there's tremendous value to that. I think we have a wide range of different personalities on this council. And yours is certainly very unique in the sense that you bring that sort of, you know, that perspective of someone who's constantly interacting with just average Burlington residents on a day-to-day basis in the context of your store, in the context of the high school, and just in the context of your life, because you really reach out to people and take care of people on a smaller scale, not just on these big policy skills. So I'm going to miss, you know, seeing you on these, miss serving with you on the two and just thank you for that.
Thanks, Max.
Now, with Counselor Nodel, I think that to say that we have a complex dynamic would be an understatement. And, you know, to be totally honest, it's been, you know, difficult at times between us. And I think that you also have taught me a lot. You also have helped me tremendously in this role and in that complexity. I hope that it's not lost, that I recognize and truly value what you've done for the Old North End for decades, whether it is the expertise that you've brought on the Board of Finance, helping normal citizens to understand complex financial issues through your professorial, teacherly way of breaking down things and helping, you know, normal people understand those issues, to actually serving and getting your hands dirty like we did last summer together in the Old North End on Dumpster Day, which is something that you did that I think also, in a very different way, helps to support the quality of life of residents in the Old North End. So I hope that by no means do you forget that I value and truly recognize the intelligence that you bring, the tremendous political acumen. That's not something that I'll miss because you've run circles around me time and time again and you're brilliant at that. And just the dedication to the Old North End and I really appreciate that. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor Tracy.[1716.01][1716.01](Applause). Any other councillor before I go to the mayor? All right, Mr. Mayor?
Well, thank you, President Wright, first of all, for continuing this, I think, really thoughtful and important tradition when we do have councillors departing and especially three councillors who have given so much to the city. So first I'll, and I will say a few words about each of you as well. I'd like to say to Counselor Nodel that I feel very fortunate to have served together over most of the time I've been in, in public life over the last seven years. I'd like to think we had more, more ups than downs and I certainly feel that we are closing at least this chapter, having worked very well together on many important things. It, I think, I think it would have been maybe easier not to have served at the same time as you at times, but I am, I am very certain that many of the initiatives and decisions that we made as collectively would not have been better had that happened. I feel, again, very, very fortunate for that. I think your ability to focus us on the nub of an issue and to explain things with incredible clarity is something I'm jealous of and... with incredible clarity is something I'm, I'm jealous of, and, and will miss. Um, but I think what I'll miss most is your willingness, um, to, uh, serve in this role, both play that important, um, role of listening to your constituents, of knowing what your constituents, uh, are saying and weighing in, but never failing, never forgetting that a key part of these jobs is to also stay true to your own self and your own judgment, and, and that that, uh, you never lost touch with that, and I appreciate that. Counselor Dean, Richard, um, I, uh, I really, uh, you know, and I, I, I think the public, um, probably, well, has a little sense of how valuable the skills, the hard skills you brought to this council are. I think we're gonna see an example of that later tonight, when we get into some of the discussions about City Hall Park. Having a professional, um, uh, of your caliber on this council has been a great opportunity for the city. Um, it, it doesn't happen that often, because it's difficult to combine, uh, the, the life of professional life and fatherhood with, uh, serving, doing what it takes to, to serve in this role. Um, we've been fortunate to have that for a lot, for the last couple of years. Um, I think, and Counselor Tracy pointed out already, but I think it is very rare to come to this council, especially as a new counselor, and immediately offer the city a new initiative, like you have with Burlington Wildways, that, uh, is gonna have, I, I agree a, a very lasting impact on this community. I do think in the years to come, this is gonna be kinda Burlington's Long Trail, or, or Appalachian Trail, this, this connection of, uh, public ways, uh, over different land ownerships, connecting these public spaces, I just think is gonna have a huge impact on keeping the quality of life in this city outstanding, even, even as we evolve and grow as a city. And, uh, in your short time, you, you made that happen. Um, I think the thing we'll most miss about you, though, is just your, your goodness and your humbleness, and your, uh, just, uh, what, uh, the attitude that you bring to our interactions. Thank you, Richard. And, uh, uh, you know, finally, Dave, um, Counselor Hartnett, um, you know, I think what I like most about this, uh, experience of the last seven years, and I've seen it happen numerous times, is, um, you know, we're, we're a city that loves our, our politics and loves our campaigns, and fights them really hard, and, uh, uh, but what I think maybe isn't fully appreciated by the people that don't sit at this table, is once we get through those campaigns, how, uh, then we come together, and we roll up our sleeves, and we find ways to get things done for the people of Burlington. I'll never forget, after, you know, my first election, where you and I were in, uh, on opposite sides, and the public knew about that, um, uh, immediately, when I stepped into this role, you made it clear, uh, that you were gonna work with me to, to move the city forward. Um, uh, that is, over time, built into a real friendship that I'm very grateful for. I'm grave, very grateful to have gotten to know Katie and Lisa, uh, as I have over the last seven years. Um, and I will miss your, uh, judgment, um, about people. Uh, I will not forget how you impacted so many of our, uh, search processes for department heads, because you had a great knack for seeing talent and seeing what would, would work, especially, uh, with our parks, and, um, with our schools. The judgment and commitment you brought there was huge, and, uh, but finally, I, I think what has so set you apart as a counselor is just how in touch with the people in New North End, uh, you consistently are. I think all of us like to think that we're in touch with our constituents. You, uh, really actively work at that, and put huge amounts of time into knowing where your, your, your neighbors are, and, uh, I'm, uh, I'm not gonna stop, uh, stopping by the store in the hope, uh, I'll, uh, find you and be able to get some of that knowledge and know what's, uh, really happening on the street. Um, and I, I'm sure, uh, we'll, we'll stay in touch and look forward to your continued contributions to the city. Thank you.
All right. Presidential prerogative, I get the last word. Um, and I'm gonna cede my time later on to, for a few remarks, in the, end of the agenda to Counselor Nodelle. I'll be brief, 'cause we need to get down to some business here. Um, so, Counselor Dean, um, it's only been two years, but I think your impact on the council was, was tremendous. I think that you were a tremendously thoughtful counselor. Um, I certainly learned from you, and will miss you on the city council. Um, I know it was a tough, tough, uh, campaign, and, um, it was tough to keep up with all your doing in your personal life, with what you were doing on the city council, and keep up with everything, but, uh, I thought you did a tremendous job as Chair of the License Committee. Um, and I just, I think you will be greatly missed on the city council. So, thank you very much, Counselor Dean, for your service to our city. I thought he was, I thought he was, I thought he was gonna pull one of those where he's, where he's leaving on me again. I thought it was gonna, I saw the chair go backwards. So, Dave and I don't have a complicated relationship, we're longtime friends, we go back 35 years, and, um, you know, we, I have times where I have to go to Dave and say, "Dave, you know, I think you may have to apologize on that one." And Dave says, "What? What are you talking about?" But he comes around, he comes around, and, and, you know, Dave has, Dave has a temper. We all know, we've seen it. But he also is a person that cares more than anybody I know. Uh, he cares about his family, he cares about his city, he cares about his friends, and Dave would give you the shirt off of his back. Um, and, uh, this council is not going to be the same with Dave Hartnett not on it. So, Dave, as a, as a colleague, but more importantly, as a nearly half of my lifetime friend, um, thank you for your incredible eight years on the city council. Uh, I cannot even put into words how much you will be missed.
Thank you.
Counselor Nodelle, we, we started out dueling back in the early days, in the 90s. Um, I think you were on your second term or third term, and I was on my first term, and we, we butted heads a lot back then. And, but we, we developed a mutual respect even then, and, uh, and the respect grew and grew, and so did our, our friendship. Um, now, we, I bother Jane on an almost daily basis. Um, I, once in a while, I give her a break and say, "Jane, I think you've had enough, so I'm not gonna call for a couple of days here." We've had our moments too. I remember the famous episode where I, where I told Jane something that she didn't like, and I heard a quick click. And I, I called her back and said, "Jane, after all this, you're hanging up on me?" But, um, but Jane, you have also been there through thick and thin, and I mean, I, I cannot say how much I appreciate your supporting me when I know that it cost you. And, and that plate that Counselor Shannon gave you, and I think the plates that Counselor Shannon gave, actually, though they cost nothing, I think they're far more, uh, value than any plaque that the city could've given you. Um, I think they meant far more, and, and the plaque saying, um, really hit me, saying, "I have a Republican," you're my Republican friend, and I'm not afraid to admit. I, I, I regret that I had you support me, but I, I know that any time that I brought that up, Counselor Nodelle said, "Don't worry about it, it's the right thing to do, and I'm gonna do the right thing." Uh, I think Counselor Nodelle, your, your intellect, your leadership, and, and everything else is really unmatched. When you think about all the issues that we faced on this city council in all your years here, um, I just cannot even begin to put into words with you either. Um, your, your loss is gonna be an incredible loss for the city, for the city council, and for me personally, as a, as a longtime colleague and a longtime friend, and I will miss you. And, and actually, one last comment. I remember during the Burlington Telecom debate, I'm sure you'll remember this, Counselor Nodelle, 'cause I forgot, I was gonna say this, but I forgot, but you made a, one of your most eloquent speeches, and then you said, "I'm not feeling the love." Remember that? Counselor Nodelle, I think tonight you have felt the love.
Yes, you have, absolutely.
So, um, so, one last time, a standing ovation for the three outgoing counselors, and then we'll get down to some business. All right, we are back on the agenda now. Thank you, everybody in the audience, for sticking with us through that. It's a little bit of a draining few moments here, but, um, we are gonna, I think we are on to, Director Spencer? I think you're up next. So there's three scoping study issues here, and, um, we talked about this, if you'd start with the, the one that's a little separate from the other two, which is the 4.02, the Intervale, correct?
Yes, we are gonna start, uh, with your support, President Wright, quickly on the Intervale Road Scoping Study, and then transition to the two related to Colchester Avenue, uh, the intersection and the bridge. I have with me Senior Transportation Planner Nicole Losha, who will be giving the overview on the Intervale Road Scoping Study.
Thank you, Director Spencer, and thank you, council, for putting this on your agenda tonight. I wanna start by thanking the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission for their funding and project management support for all of these projects, and for this one, to thank the Intervale Center for their contributions, and the community members that came out in support of us tonight. Try my slide advancer as well. So, this project was, uh, really set out to identify ways to enhance access into the Intervale, and improve the bicycle and pedestrian connections in particular. The study itself identifies the existing conditions, evaluates various alternatives, and engages the community to ultimately select a preferred alternative. The alternatives are based on recommendations in previous planning studies, including our transportation plan, the walk-bike plan, and the Parks Recreation and Waterfront Master Plan. And data that's been collected by the Intervale Center over the years shows how important this is. While vehicles are still a primary mode of transportation down there, there is very strong use by people walking, biking, and additional, um, trucks that use this for other uses. There is a mix of agricultural, recreational, and industrial uses, where with all of this, pedestrians and bicycles are sharing the road with all the vehicle traffic. The roadway itself, approximately a third of it is paved, the southernmost section, and the remaining section is gravel with a narrower right-of-way. There is one railroad crossing along the asphalt segment, and there were three reported crashes between 2012 and 2016. We involve the community in various ways through this study. We had an advisory committee of city staff, the Regional Planning Commission, the Intervale Center, and Gardener Supply. And we had two community meetings. The last one was an open house at the Intervale Center that, uh, helped us really narrow down the preferred alternatives. So, the alternatives that we're moving forward with and recommending tonight, uh, is Alternative 3 for the asphalt section, and this includes 11-foot travel lanes on the roadway itself, with a striped shoulder as well, to help vehicles stay in a clear path. A 10-foot shared-use path on the west side, that includes a 3-foot buffer for lighting and green space. And the cost estimate for this section is 1.67 million. In the gravel section, they're recommending Alternative 2. And this is a stone-dust path on the eastern side of the roadway. It's outside of a right-of-way, so this would require strong coordination with the Intervale Center to either install and/or maintain this path. And they have participated along the way, and are very willing to work with the city as we try to install this stone-dust path. The estimate for this section is 230,000. So it's a very quick overview of the study itself. I did provide a link to the website in your packet and on the screen here, for anyone that would like more information. Tonight, we're asking council to endorse the plan itself, and endorse the recommended alternatives, so that the city and the Intervale Center can move forward for construction and funding. I'd like to thank the Transportation, Energy, and Utilities Committee for considering this item and supporting this as well. And with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Nicole. And actually, let's get the resolution on the floor. Counselor Tracy?
So, I would move approval of the, um, resolution, intersections, uh, the Intersection Scoping Study of, um, Bicycle and Pedestrian Access Feasibility Study of Intervale Road, um, and waive the reading and adopt the resolution, and after a second, I do not need the floor back.
Seconded by Counselor Busher. Um, and Counselor Busher, you do want the floor?
Yes, just one, um, I might've missed it, but with, um, the gravel segment, the Al- Alternative 2, that's going to be maintained by the Intervale Center, correct?
They have expressed their willingness to maintain it, yes.
Right, right, and that's much less invasive, it's much more environmentally in sync with that section, and so it, it really is quite nice. The whole, the whole process is a really good process, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the city council? Hearing done, Counselor Jiang?
Yep, and, um, it's just a simple question about timeline in starting the project, and when do we hope it will be finished? And at the same time, we know the Intervale during the summer is very busy, if that work will be impacting, um, the Intervale access at all.
Thank you. Um, we don't have a construction timeline yet. Um, our, we have a couple of ways of pursuing funding to build this project. Um, one option is, we think this will be a very strong candidate for the state's Bicycle and Pedestrian Grant Program, and so we will consider that in grant applications. And the other option is, uh, trying to fit this in the annual capital program for the city. And so, we don't have the funding set aside yet. Um, we would make sure that we would coordinate any construction around the big events in the Intervale, the big activities during their busiest months, to have, um, the least impact that we can.
Thank you, Counselor Jiang. Any other, Counselor Dean?
It's not, uh, thank you, President Wright, it's not specifically a question, but just a comment to say that, you know, we've already heard about how valuable the Intervale is as a, as a, one of the, the, the largest open space, uh, and center of wildlands in our city. And this makes, as part of, uh, the thought about a Wildways connection, this makes that, uh, it, it just enhances the ability for us to connect this piece of, of, of critical property to many of the other open lands that exist adjacent to it. So I think it's, it's a, a real positive to see this come forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Dean. Any other counselor? Okay, we should, we're ready to vote. All those in favor of approving 4.02, which is the Intervale, uh, issue, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Now we'll go back to 4.01, and that one is, uh, Scoping Study of the Main Street slash Winuski River Bridge.
My name is Peter Keating, I'm with the Regional Planning Commission, and we entered into the study in cooperation with the city. I think they came to us a couple of years ago, it's that important link that, uh, connects you to your sister city of Winuski. I wanna thank the city councilors, Busher and Dean, who were on the advisory committee for this. They had to sit through about a year and a half worth of meetings. We also have a couple of people who spoke earlier from the Ward 1 NPA, Wayne Sendl and Richard Hilliard, who are also on that committee. I wanna thank them for their input as well. I'm gonna spend a couple of minutes in some background, but then I wanna leap to the recommendations, I think that's the most important part. All right, what do I, a minute? Is there a trick to this? All right, we'll keep just...
Do you wanna use the computer to floor?
Amy, if you can.
Amy? Yeah. All right, thank you, this is like a... So, a little bit of background, this is a bridge, it goes back to the 27th flood, when the previous bridge was washed out. Um, it has gone through some pretty significant repairs in the 60s, 70s, and 90s. Very recently, if you crossed it, probably would've seen last year, the replacing segments of the railing that, which had deteriorated. Surprisingly, for a bridge that's 90 years old, structurally, structurally, it's very sound. Um, unfortunately, it is not the best bridge functionally. Um, the current configuration is this, the lanes are too narrow at 10 and 1/2 feet, there's no shoulder whatsoever, sidewalks aren't up to standard, and the railing is too low. If you're a cyclist, this is a very, very dangerous link, there's no cycling facility at all. If you're on the sidewalk, you're in traffic, and either of those is very, very unsafe. We came up with a number of alternatives, but the two I wanna talk about have the same configuration on the top, on the deck. This is what it is. It essentially widens the entire bridge by about a third. It adds bicycle and pedestrian facilities on both sides, 12-foot shared-use paths separated from the lanes, the lanes were expanded to 11 feet, we provide a 2-foot shoulder as There is a slight difference underneath the bridge between Alternatives 4 and 5 that we're asking you to make a recommendation on, um, and it's related to the abutments and the piers in the river. Alternative 4 would expand the current abutments and, um, piers that are in the river to a cost of $18 million. to a cost of $18 million, a little bit more than that. And the other Alternative Five looks at taking out two of those piers and replacing it with one. This was a suggestion that came from the Agency of Transportation to cut down on the obstructions in the river. And the Agency of Natural Resources folks liked this as well, to have things out of the waterway. The cost of this is a little bit higher, at 22.7 million. The other part of the recommendation is related to a technique and how this new bridge would be constructed. It's called accelerated bridge construction. I'm going to go through this graphic very quickly to explain how this happens and why it's being recommended as well. This is the current configuration. Those little blue dots you see to the right are the utilities. There's fiber optic cable on this bridge right now. It would have to be relocated. What would happen is the abutments and the piers would be expanded on the downriver side, put in the bike-ped facilities on that side, move the utilities over to that newly constructed piece, build a new bridge right next to the current bridge on the upstream side. When that new bridge is ready, close traffic on the existing bridge, take it apart, build the abutments and the piers back to what you need, and slide the new bridge into place. This is a technique that the Agency of Transportation has been using increasingly all around the state. Put in the traffic, get rid of the temporary supports for the old bridge. This is a little tough to see. This is a very, very constrained site. And to make this happen, to build the new bridge that will be slid into place on the upstream side, you've got to get into the river next to the current bridge. That means getting in from both the Wynouski side as well as the Burlington side. So when this happens, there will be impacts to the Chase Mill parking area as well as the park on the Wynouski side. The reason this particular method is being recommended is the closure of the bridge. There would be total closure, obviously, when they have to take the traffic down and demolish it. It's estimated to take four to six weeks. If this bridge was built by conventional methods, it would take two to three years, replacing one or two lanes at a time as you move across the bridge, keeping some traffic open, two or three lanes at a time. So it's difficult for the four to six weeks it's totally closed. But instead of having restrictions going on for two to three years, it was seen as a better way to move forward. So similar to the last project, we're asking you to accept the resolution on this particular one, to endorse it. If you do that, we'll have to go to the Agency of Transportation to seek funding for this. Right now, it's not on any V-Trans bridge list because the condition of the bridge is actually pretty good. We'll have to advocate to move that forward. There may be some alternative funding methods that we can look at, too, in the coming years. But to the question related to when this project might happen that came up earlier, not likely in the very near future. It's a very complicated project, a very expensive one, taking place in a very, very constrained site. So we'll get back to you on a schedule, and we know better.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Tracy, to move the resolution?
Yep.
Whoa.
Sorry. So I -- I move approval of the scoping study of the Main Street/Wynouski River Bridge, and waive the reading and adopt the resolution.
Seconded by Counselor Busher. Counselor -- any want the floor back? Counselor Tracy?
Yeah, so just one thing that I want to say is that one of the things that we see through these scoping studies, thank you, I really appreciate that, I apologize, through these scoping studies is that we are able to see a tremendous amount of collaboration take place firsthand between our fabulous DPW staff, between partners like the CCRPC, and between adjacent communities like Wynouski. And I forgot to mention on the last project between other community partners like the Intervale Center, which was an amazing partner on that project as well. So I think that that's one of the most exciting elements of this, is that this is not only an actual connection, a physical connection, but the process by which we've arrived at it has been through shared collaboration with our adjacent communities and has also been respective of the next item that we're going to talk about, which is an adjacent intersection area. So really trying to take a holistic view, not only of how we interact with other communities, but how this particular project will relate to other projects in order to increase safety and access and ultimately connection between surrounding communities. So thank you for all your work on this.
Thank you, Counselor Tracy. Discussion by the City Council? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. Brings us to item 4.03, which is another scoping resolution on the Colchester Avenue/Riverside Avenue/Barratt Street/Hill Street issue. And set us up.
Thanks for having me. I am Jason Scharest with the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission. I just want to -- when we start these studies, we develop what is called Purpose and Need Statements. And I just want to begin by reading the purpose statement just so everyone can get a sense of what the alternatives I'm going to show are trying to achieve. And that was to define a safer intersection that enhances mobility and access for all users while contributing to livable and vibrant communities and ensuring efficient operations. And with our needs, we sought to address was to improve safety and mobility, simplify the intersection, enhance it as a gateway into Burlington, and manage traffic congestion. We had several different entities representing our project advisory committee that advised us along the way. Counselor Busher was on the advisory committee. Thank you for your support on this committee. We also had Wayne Sendl and Richard Hilliard, who were previously mentioned, were our Ward One and Eight NPA representatives. And I forgot to mention it, but I did want to thank our consulting team, StanTech, for their work on this. They were asked a lot along the process. I think we originally had three project advisory committee meetings scheduled, and we ended up having a total of five. And a large part of that reason was catering to the request that the advisory committee gave us. There was one short-term alternative that was considered and approved by the committee. There were three medium-term alternatives. Two of them focused around a consolidated, signalized intersection. There were just variations on each other. And the third one was a roundabout. The roundabout was discarded a little bit before the end of the process. It's just not being viable. So the main decision centered around the two, the signalized intersection variation. And the advisory committee landed on preferring Alternative One, which I will show a graphic of momentarily. There was also a hybrid alternative that could sort of serve as a stepping stone if the medium-term alternative was taking too long to get to. There's the option of adding an additional northbound-through lane coming down the hill on Colchester Avenue, going across the bridge into Wynouski to kind of mitigate the extensive queuing that happens up the hill. And when I say short-term, that was envisioned to happen within a three-year timeframe. And medium-term was within a three-to-10-year time window. But a large part of that will depend on the availability of achieving funding to construct these. And last on the slide, but not least, this study was actually delayed quite a bit. We started in early 2017, I want to say January of 2017. And it was actually put on hold because the Wynouski Bridge study started maybe about a year after. So we kind of waited for that to catch up just to make sure that the two of them would align appropriately. And the main consideration there was we were unsure of how many lanes on the bridge were being recommended. So once they were confident with that study that there was going to be four lanes, we picked this back up and moved it forward. So up on the screen right now is the short-term alternative. North is up, just to orient you. Riverside Ave and Colchester Ave kind of come in from the south. You'll see Barrett Street and Mill Streets coming in from the east. And it largely looks like it does today, but there's some significant enhancements in terms of bicycle and pedestrian movement throughout the intersection, enhanced crosswalks and bicycle markings through the intersections. Pedestrian signals are called for here, which have actually been installed by DPW. So part of this is complete. It calls for a new crosswalk across the bridge, which is at the top here, which doesn't exist today. It calls for a sidewalk along Mill Street. There's a little bit of unconventional parking that happens on this side of the intersection. So that's been formalized. And we've also called for adding in a protected left turn to go into Barrett Street. It's a difficult movement right now, so that would actually give a vehicle a dedicated green arrow to make that movement. And then also some better signage for people coming up Riverside Avenue. And here is Alternative One, the four-way intersection. And that would consolidate things to a signalized intersection at the intersection of Riverside and Barrett Street, which is right here. And it would turn Mill Street into a stop-controlled intersection. It's advised that we examine a possible right turn only coming out of that intersection, but that's a detail that'll be flushed out further as this goes into design. Some more bicycle enhancements. This actually removes the on-street parking between Barrett and Mill Street. And we have eliminated this area right here. It's probably the most significant aesthetic-wise that would create the opportunity for a pocket park and would decrease the amount of pavement in the area. The cost of this is about $3.3 million. And this is the alternative that the Project Advisor Committee and the Transportation, Energy, and Utilities Committee are recommending for endorsement as the municipally-preferred alternative. Next steps, I think there's a resolution in front of you for those two alternatives that I just went over. And just to note again that the short-term implementation has begun. Take any questions?
All right. Thank you. Let's first get the resolution on the floor. Counselor Tracy?
I move that we waive the reading and adopt the resolution regarding the Intersection Scoping Study of Colchester Avenue/Riverside Avenue/Barratt Street and Mill Street.
Thank you, Counselor Tracy. Seconded by Counselor Dean. Counselor Tracy, do you need the floor back? Counselor Busher?
So I will say that this was not as easy. This was challenging. And we did come together with Alternative One, but you did reference one of the issues that still needs some further discussion. Mill Street is this little street in Ward One that has a lot of activity now. There are some new businesses. There is a restaurant, and it's been revitalized. It's very small, I understand that. But if you start restricting traffic and only have it go one way or right turn only, that was not something that everyone that interacts on Mill Street either lives or has to do business there was absolutely supportive of. So I think that really does need a second look. Other than that, I think that we did come together. And I think the process, it's a healthy process. It was a very diverse group of people. And we all got our thoughts out there on the table. And it was amazing that we came up with something that we all could support. So anyways, thank you for your efforts on this.
Thank you, Counselor Busher. Anyone else? Hearing -- Counselor Jiang?
Thank you for the presentation. And I just wanted to double-check as to why we haven't seen UVM as part of the study here. Looks like there were a lot of organizations, but not UVM, knowing that Colchester Avenue cuts through UVM.
We did have a representative on the Project Advisor Committee that was speaking on behalf of the Hill Institution. So UVM, UVM Medical Center, and Champlain College.
And also in terms of cost, looks like the first presentation around the bridge did mention the Agency of Transportation in terms of cost. But here, where the cost will be coming from?
That will remain to be seen. There is the possibility, though, that this could go after some safety funding. That funding is limited. It's actually how the roundabout in the south end is being funded. So that's a potential opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jiang. Any other counselor? Hearing none. All those in favor of item 4.03, the Intersection Scoping Study of Colchester Ave/Riverside Ave, Barrett Street and Hill Street, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Real quickly, before we move on to item 4.04, we are going to adjourn the City Council meeting. Don't worry, just for a minute. And we are going to -- not adjourn, excuse me. Not adjourn, not adjourn. We're going to recess briefly the City Council meeting so that I can convene the Liquor Control Commission meeting. Item number one is the agenda. Commissioner Dean?
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. I would move that we adopt our agenda.
Seconded by Counselor Roof. All those in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? We have the agenda. Item number two, Commissioner Dean?
I would move the adoption of the consent agenda, take any actions as indicated.
That is seconded by Counselor Roof. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have passed the consent agenda. Now on to the deliberative agenda and item 3.01, Commissioner Dean?
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. I'd move the approval of the 2018-2019 first-class restaurant-bar liquor license application for La Boca Wood Fired Pizzeria with the following conditions: contingent upon fire-martial approval with all standard conditions.
Seconded by Counselor Roof. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Item number 3.02, Commissioner Dean?
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. I move the approval of the 2018-2019 first-class restaurant-bar liquor license application for Paisanos, 176 Main Street, with the following conditions: contingent upon fire-martial approval with all standard conditions.
Seconded by Counselor Roof. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 3.02 passes. And 3.03, Commissioner Dean?
Commissioner Wright, I'd move the approval of the 2018-2019 second-class store liquor license application for Nepali Dumpling House, 78 North Street, with the following conditions: contingent upon fire-martial approval with all standard conditions.
Seconded by Counselor Roof. Any discussion? Counselor Jiang?
I have a question. And a quick question. And if you can make the distinction between first class and second class, what are the differences, please?
So a first-class liquor license allows those people who hold that license to serve liquor on the premises and requires them to then monitor how the people who are running that business to monitor how that's and comply with DLC restrictions on how it's served. A second-class license is for sales of liquor in a store environment. So it's essentially as a store. And those are two, understood as by the DLC, as two different types of licensing requirements.
Thank you, Counselor Dean.
Thank you, Counselor Jiang. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have passed item 3.03.
Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Commissioner Dean, seconded by Commissioner Roof. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have adjourned the Liquor Control Commission meeting. We have adjourned the Liquor Control Commission meeting. And again, thank you, Commissioner Dean, for your great work as chair of that committee. You have big shoes to fill.
Thank you.
We will have big shoes. And now with that meeting recessed, I am going to convene the Board of Civil Authority meeting. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, President Wright. I'd like to convene the Board of Civil Authority at 9:49 PM. And first item on the agenda is the agenda. I had a welcome motion for it.
Move approval?
Thank you, President Wright. It's our second. Seconded by Counselor Jang. Discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously, and that brings us to the consent agenda.
Move approval of the consent agenda and take the actions indicated?
It's our second. Thank you, Counselor Dean. Discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and at 9:50 PM, President Wright, the Board of Civil Authority is adjourned.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now we will reconvene the regular meeting of the City Council at the same time, 9:50. And Item 4.04, a communication from Mayor Weinberger regarding appointment of Human Resource Director. Mr. Mayor?
Great, thank you, President Wright. I would like to invite Deanna Palumbo to join us here at the table. And Deanna Paluba, we are, so here's the thing, you know, the city of Burlington, like most organizations, the most important asset that the city has is in many ways its people, its employees. And the stewardship, the care of the employees, the nurturing of our employees falls to the Human Relations Department, to the Human Resources Department to take care of. And I'm excited that after an extensive national search to be bringing Deanna to you for appointment as the new director of Human Resources tonight. Let me just say a few things about Deanna's background and why I think she's such a strong She has been, had an extensive career working with employees in a variety of roles. She had a long run at IBM and where she got rave reviews from her colleagues there. And then after, she moved to the West Coast and became involved with a biotech company out there called Gilead Sciences. And while she was the head of employee relations, that company grew from 4,000 employees to 10,000. And Deanna, throughout that period, headed up an international team that helped the company manage that successful growth. She, so in addition to her excellent background, she has deep roots in this community. She grew up in Colchester. She has received a couple of degrees from Champlain College. And finally, throughout her professional career, particularly at Gilead, she has demonstrated her commitment to diversity and inclusion. Gilead was recognized by Forbes Magazine as a best employer for diversity during her time at the company and after she had pushed for inclusion as one of the core values of the company. So for those reasons and more, President Wright, I am excited to be presenting Deanna to you for confirmation tonight.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any, Counselor Shannon, I recognize you for a motion, and then if we have questions for the candidate?
I move to approve the mayor's appointment of Deanna Paluba as the city's Director of Human Resources and grant the personal hardship waiver for residency.
Okay, Counselor, thank you, Counselor Shannon, seconded by Counselor Dean. All right, it's on the floor, discussion. Counselor Jang?
Welcome, and thank you for joining the city. And my question is maybe to, yes, Counselor Shannon, around the hardship. Is it undetermined, or do we have a specific time for the hardship for the new employee to relocate here in Burlington?
Counselor Shannon?
Could you repeat the question? What was the question?
Yeah, the question was about the hardship.
Yes.
Yes, so I was asking if there is a specific time that we grant the hardship, or is it just undetermined?
Oh, I think that's probably better for the city attorney.
Yes.
I believe under the 2016 changes that you folks made to the rule, it is if they were to change their residency in terms of sell the home, then it becomes, it would come back to this body, but there's not a time limit upon this subsection.
Okay, but can we make one? Can we propose a specific time?
It's not in the rules that this body passed. Interesting. I'm not sure, it's not in the rules.
It's not in the rules, all right. But now, Counsel President, it's not in the rule to determine a certain time for the hardship, but how can we ensure that we have one? Like maybe two years, three years? How can we ensure that we will approve that aspect?
Well, the mayor, I think, would want to speak to that, but we have, we passed an item on this where we changed, actually, we have an exemption that would seem to fit this one pretty neatly. Mr. Mayor?
That's right, President, I just wanted to point out, the essence of what Counselor Shannon has moved is that it is clear within, the way the charter is written, a new appointee has up to a year to become a voter of the city of Burlington. The council has the authority, under certain conditions, to grant an extension, an indefinite extension of that. That's what Counselor Shannon has proposed. The council has defined the reasons by which these extensions will be granted. There are three of them. And we are proposing that Deanna be granted the extension out of the third one, the one most recently created, which has been given to four other department head directors, which is that because she owns already a house in a nearby community within Chittingen County, her house happens to be about a mile from the city border, and one that her family has occupied for generations, decades, that it would constitute a hardship to require her to sell this long family position for what amounts tonight to a three-month appointment and what will, you know, ultimately be, you know, no longer than a two-year appointment. My view on it is we have granted this exemption to, again, four other employees. I think it would be a mistake, and very hard to define why we would do that for our other department heads and not do that for Deanna. I think it would be a major mistake to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All set, Counselor Jang?
Not really, not really all set. But I just wanted to make sure that we all have an agreement that maybe we will give Deanna like a year, at least, in order for her to figure out ways to become a registered voter of the city of Burlington. I mean, I just wanted to bring that aspect into it.
Okay, and that's not what the motion is. The motion is that we're granting her the exemption so she does not have to come back after a year. So then it's up to any counselor if they choose to not support this. Okay? But now we have Counselor Tracy in line, and then Counselor Mason, then Counselor Hartnett.
So thank you so much for being here tonight and for applying for this job. I'm very much impressed by your qualifications, and I think that you're going to do great work for the city of Burlington should you be approved tonight. And I hope that I have reason to work with you in that role, should you get it. You may know this about me, but I've been very consistent on the residency requirement. I've voted against pretty much everybody, every department head that's been, actually not pretty much, every department head that has been brought forward who has not lived in Burlington. I just have this thing that I think that the department heads who are part of the city should live in the city of Burlington. I know that others have moved to Burlington or have relocated to this area and have made the specific choice to move to Burlington. And so purely out of fairness to the, and out of consistency to those other department heads who I've either voted against or who have relocated, I will not be supporting your appointment tonight, but it's not a comment on your character or your qualifications for the role. And I just want to be very clear about that because this is a matter of consistency and a matter of really feeling that we should have our department heads live in Burlington. But thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Tracy. Counselor Mason?
Thank you, President Wright. Thank you for coming. I'm, like others, I'm most impressed by your resume and look forward to working with you. I do, however, have some of the same uneas that I think we're hearing, and I think that flows out of the 2016 exemption that we adopted. And I think it's worth this council potentially referring to charter change to sort of dig into a little because my concern is this is drafted now, which I think Ms. Paluba has meant, all it requires is a certification of hardship, and we're somewhat bound by that. As it's been applied, it's sort of been because of, you know, with various candidates, you know, the statement that if I moved, I would lose money. My concern is, you know, that exemption is somewhat consuming the whole. I don't know anyone that would not meet that criteria. If it's just moving causes a financial hardship, everyone would meet that criteria. So I hope to work with maybe Counselor Tracy and some others to come up with a resolution for the next council to maybe look a little closer at that and put some greater certainty around that to avoid this uncomfortable conversation every time someone doesn't live in Burlington.
Thank you, Counselor Mason. Okay, are we, Counsel, no, he's all set. Counselor Pine?
Yes, please. Yeah. Mr. President, I wondered if the, there are a couple of department heads that I believe are not subject to the residency requirement now, and I'm just, it occurred to me that this one may be one for future consideration in that regard. So when we talk about, you know, future changes, I'm not sure the HR director is, you know, is one that needs to be on that same list, because there are other department heads that we have made that exception for permanently.
Right, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, Counsel Paul?
Thank you. So I was, I had the pleasure of spending some time with Deanna, and I was really glad to be able to be at the press conference. Your resume speaks for itself, and your qualifications, you're very qualified for the job, and I think, I think it's our job to support you and see that you're successful. I have also, like Counselor Tracy and Counselor Mason, have always supported that department heads should live in the city of Burlington. But, you know, we did make an accept, we did make another exception and change to that policy by allowing that if people lived in Chittingen County at the time that they were appointed, that they did not have to move. And that's one of the, you know, just like being promoted from within and having children in another school district. So again, I, you know, it wasn't something that I was particularly supportive, but it is a rule. And, you know, whether you win or lose, it certainly is one of the things that, it is, it is an exemption. And so because of that, I'm happy to support you and will do everything that I can, as I'm sure everyone else, whether they vote for you or not, will do what they can to see that you're successful. So thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Paul. Any other discussion by the City Council? Hearing none. All those in favor of the appointment, please, oh, would you like, did you want to say a few words?
Yeah, just, I just want to say that I'm really excited and honored to have this opportunity be considered, to be part of the city of Burlington team and the HR department. I am, you know, really tied to this community. I understand your positions and respect that for sure. But I live right in Colchester, and I live in my family home. I have two adult children that live in California, and I'm hoping to entice them to move back to Vermont by, you know, selling my home to them someday when they return, so I'm not opposed to moving to Burlington someday, but it's not something I'm able to do now. You know, I have a long history, I've been working in HR for about 16 years, and I, some of the areas that I'm passionate about that I hope to bring to the city of Burlington is my desire to really focus on employee engagement, because that's how we get important things done. My focus on making sure that we have equitable and fair employment policies within the organization which I work for. And finally, you know, I've really got a history of being focused on diversity and inclusion, and I think that's something that's also important to the mayor and to the city of Burlington as well. So I really just asked, thank you for your consideration, and I'm really excited and hope that you will support me in this.
Thank you, Ms. Palumba. I think we are ready to vote.
Great.
All those in favor of this appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One no vote, Counselor Tracy. So that, you are approved, congratulations. Item number 4.05 is a communication from the mayor regarding the appointment of Brian Low as Chief Innovation Officer. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, President Wright. So to make sure we're all on the same page about what's happening here, you may recall a year ago, Brian Low, who has served in important roles for the city, two prior important roles in the mayor's office, we came forward and asked you to make him the interim Chief Innovation Officer. And the reason for asking him to be appointed as an interim, there was no doubt about how committed Brian was, or his hard-working nature, or just his all-around great collegiality and great person to have on the team. There was a question, stepping into this very different role in the prior ones, whether it would be a great fit for him and whether it would be a great fit for the city. I'm very happy to be coming back here, not surprised, but still very happy to be coming back a year later, when in this role, Brian has had an incredible, I believe, record of achievement over the last year. He has led the effort that resulted in voter approval to create, bring about perhaps the most significant reorganization of city government in a couple decades with the permit reform effort. He has stood up the Early Learning Initiative, first the capacity grant effort, and now, as you know, we are out in the community with the beginning of these first-step scholarships, something that wouldn't have happened without years of effort on Brian's part. He shepherded with the support of others, but he was on point for the equity report that I think was an important addition to our annual Town Meeting Day reporting this year. And he has totally, and quite seemingly effortlessly, the rest of us, brought about a wonderful, you know, really a very substantial redesign of the website, making it a far more user-friendly interface. And I, you know, there's a lot of less visible stuff on the technology side that Brian has also been responsible for and succeeded at overseeing and ushering in. So it is with great enthusiasm that I come back to you and ask for Brian's interim role to be made permanent, and I hope he'll have strong council support in that tonight.
All right. Mr. Low, did you?
And we're not seeking a residency exemption.
No residency exemption, all right. I know exactly where he lives. All right, a couple of words, Mr. Low, before we, see if there's anything from the council?
Just very briefly, it really has been a great privilege to serve in this role. I'm grateful to the mayor for the opportunity, and those are very kind words, but there's definitely a big team working on a number of these different projects that, in the INT department and then across the city.
Thank you, Mr. Low. Any questions from the council? Counsel Hartnett?
Thank you. I don't have any questions, I just have a comment, and so I'm glad we're actually doing this tonight. Because I remember a year ago, and we did this, right, and everybody was kind of a little uncertain for different reasons, right? And I was really glad that the city was thinking outside the box here, right? That we were going to give somebody that had, you know, worked hard for the city, an opportunity to prove himself and to show us, you know, what he had. We didn't really go for the national search, and we didn't do this. We said to somebody, look, you've been good to Burlington, you've worked hard for us, you've done a lot of great things, you'd like to try this opportunity, you know, you're going to work close with Beth Anderson, you're going to do, you know, all this stuff. And I know that felt, gave some counselors a little uncomfortable feeling. I was excited that we were doing that. I think that says a lot as a city, that we're willing to take care of one of our own that worked hard and give him the opportunity to see if he could succeed, right? That we were going to give him that challenge, he was going to accept the challenge and take it, and he has done so in just a remarkable way. And, but I applaud the city for taking that approach. I think it's important that we do that. We don't have to do it every single time, but we have to do it once in a while, and this was a great case to do it, and we've been rewarded with it. And I just would like to acknowledge all the work that he has done on the early initiative learning. It's been amazing. I've been proud to work with him on that. We spoke earlier tonight. It's just, I welcome this, and it's a great, great appointment tonight, thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Hartnett. I think we'd all agree that Brian's done a great job for the city. Any other discussion by the City Council? Hearing none. Counsel Jang?
I'm sorry, President, but I have to say something about this wonderful guy, because he's an incredible person. And many people don't know, he's a soldier as well. He is a member of the military, a father, and also a resident of my ward. When I came here, and I was new, I'm still new here, not even two years yet, but he was the first person who really showed me real integrity and real hard work, how it looked like. And I think it all came out during the middle, you know, and I looked at him all the time and hoped that when I become mayor someday, you'll work for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Jang. That's not tonight, though. Okay, so all those in favor of this nomination, please say.
I have to make a motion.
The appointment has not been moved. Counsel Shannon?
I move to confirm the appointment of Brian Low as Chief Innovation Officer.
Seconded by Counsel Roof. All those in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lot of standing O's tonight. Item 4.55, we have to keep moving here, folks. Item 4.55 was 3.52 on the consent agenda. Counsel Nodelle?
Yes, President Wright, this is item 4.055, which was 3.52 on consent. I move adoption of this resolution, making a -- approving a fourth amendment to the lease agreement with the Leahy Center for Lake Champlain. Briefly have request the floor after a second.
Seconded by Counsel Roof. Counsel Nodelle, you have the floor back.
Thank you, President Wright. This -- the city has a lease agreement with the Leahy Center for Lake Champlain, also known as Echo. This is a longstanding lease. This is the fourth amendment that we propose making tonight. It comes to the council on a three-to-one vote at the Board of Finance, which is why it was pulled off of consent. The issue that came up at the Board of Finance meeting relates to the fact that this change in the lease will acknowledges a change in the governance of the Leahy Center that has been in place for over 10 years, but which is at odds with -- the change in the bylaws of the Leahy Center is at odds with what the lease has said these many years. And so we are bringing the lease into conformity with the bylaws. My view was, I didn't love the process, but we -- the city has many ways of ensuring accountability of the Leahy Center to the city. And based on that, and the fact that they've been functioning well, and that there was a discussion with the university president and with the mayor, when they made this change in board composition, I was comfortable with it, and I urge support of this motion.
Thank you, Counsel Nodelle. Counsel Buescher?
So I was the no vote, and I just wanted to explain. So I so value the Echo, but what the original lease said was that there would be -- the Board of Directors would be comprised of one-third of the representatives coming from the City of Burlington, one-third from the University of Vermont, and one-third to be representatives of the public at large. And the communication that we were given, as Counselor Nodelle stated, was that in 2008 there was a drift from this, and there was a decision from -- by their bylaws to no longer adhere to that. To me, that's disturbing, that -- but what I didn't know was -- what I learned was that that was shared with the president of UVM, as Counselor Nodelle stated, and the mayor at that time. And I understand that this brings us into compliance with their bylaws, but I feel that Echo is on the waterfront. I feel that it's really important that there be some members, it doesn't have to be the ratio that's stated in the original lease, but I really felt that there should be representation from one or two members from Burlington. I understand that there are -- they have a very close working relationship with Parks and Rec, and -- but I still feel pretty strongly that as we move forward in the future, you have to take the people out of the equation and just talk about structure. I think it would be a better structure for Burlington if we had representatives from Burlington on that board, and that's why I didn't support this.
Thank you, Counsel Buescher. Any other discussion on this issue? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Two no votes. The two no votes are Counsel Buescher and Counsel Tracy. That passes by a 10-to-2 vote. We are now on to item 4.06, and a request has been made that we have a recess, a really, really short recess. So we will recess for two minutes. We'll literally be back in two minutes. We are back. All right. Item 4.06. Are you ready, Counsel Nodelle?
Thank you, President Wright. I move adoption of the -- I waive the reading. I move adoption of the resolution relating to authorization to execute contract for the reconstruction of City Hall Park, and ask for the floor after a second.
Seconded by Counsel Hartnett. Counsel Nodelle, you have the floor.
Thank you. The version of this resolution that I moved is the one that was posted to board docs at the end of the week, last week. So, and I wanted to note that the whereas clause, starting on line 81, is not strictly correct, but the amendment that will be coming from Counselor Pine, if it succeeds, will correct the small inaccuracy there about the exact action taken by the Board of Finance. If that motion to amend fails, we'll be -- we should just correct that language about the Board of Finance action. So this vote tonight is to approve a construction contract. This is not a vote on the design of City Hall Park. The design of the City Hall Park renovation has gone through many, many meetings at different levels of our community. And last June, the council, after the Ad Hoc Committee did its work, and after the Development Review Board granted a permit, a board of citizens appointed by this body to act on behalf of the people of Burlington, granted a permit. We then came to the council, had listened to the community, the concerns about the trees. We created the Ad Hoc Committee process. It resulted in the restoration and adding of additional trees, and then in June, this council said yes to a revised design. And based on that action, the city went out and put this project to bid. The bids came back in February, and we had -- they came back higher than very rough estimates of costs that we asked for in January in order to be transparent with the public about the sources and uses of funds for this project, based on what we knew at the time. Now, the bids came back higher, and we have a very good memo from staff explaining why. And we may hear more from them if we want to hear more, but the memo is there for everyone to read. And I think it's important for this council to understand that some of the reason for the increased cost is on us, is on the city council that say, "We need an -- we want to do an Ad Hoc Committee. We want to take more time. We're going to make changes, and when you make changes, you then have to pay more money to the people who do the design and do the engineering." And so we have to own some of that higher cost, and the delay in the bidding meant that we are in an environment where there's many more construction projects going on in the City of Burlington. And so we're on -- we're not in a great bargaining position when there's a lot of work out there. And so we have to acknowledge that we own some of these increased costs. Now, many of us have been communicating with the mayor about the costs coming in higher than we thought they would be, based on the January 2019 estimates. And as a result of that fact, and I think a sharing of concerns about that, because we do have to acknowledge that we have budget constraints, we have many, many good things that we are trying to do in the City of Burlington on limited resources, and so we should try to trim the cost as much as possible. And I'm going to end there in order to anticipate the, I think, what is coming up as the First Amendment. It is true that this value engineering and efforts to reduce the cost, that work has continued through today. And this is how, this is how the -- when we work together between the council administration, we often work up until the end in order to try to make the best decision possible. And so I hope that we'll have -- be able to walk through some of the ways in which the -- this budget has been trimmed, and I will end my comments there and reserve the right to maybe speak briefly to the amendment, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Nodelle. I think that I want to go to the -- in order of the amendment, I want to get right into the amendments. Do we need to hear from the team for a minute first?
That's entirely up to you.
Okay, then I want to go, because really the crux of this debate is going to be the amendments, quite honestly. So I want to go to the --
Stand.
I understand, but these are going to be the ones. I'm going to go to Counsel Dean for the first -- that's listed as a First Amendment. And Counsel Dean?
Thank you, President Wright. Shall I read the text of the amendment first?
Yes.
And one thing that's not included in the information that's been provided to the council is where this would be inserted. I'm proposing that it goes after line 57 in the current resolution language. So here's how the text of the amendment proposed. Whereas the Department of Public Works, who have been managing the City Hall Park bidding process in partnership with the Department of Parks, Recreation and Waterfront, advises the council that the date for acceptance of the initial bid provided on February 11 by the low bidder, S.D. Ireland, legally expires on or around March 30, 2019, and therefore requires that the council take action at its March 25 meeting or risk losing the commitment of the low bidder, S.D. Ireland, to move forward with a project during the 2019 construction season at the current bid pricing. So after a second, I would --
Seconded by Counsel Hartnett. You have the floor back. Counsel Dean?
Right. So the intent here is to, I think there have been questions tonight about why it is important for the council to act tonight on this issue. I think this frames the kind of -- if we wish to move forward with this remake and re-envisioning of City Hall Park, we have to make a decision in the short term. We cannot take additional time, because it essentially negates the fact that we have a low bid in place that has a time-sensitive -- a decision has to be made, and it's a time-sensitive decision. So that's why I'm offering this amendment as a point of clarification to the resolution and ask for people's consideration of that as just a point of information more than anything else.
Thank you, Counsel Dean. Is there any discussion on this amendment? Counsel Buescher?
So I just have a question. Was -- did the administration actually ask S.D. Ireland if indeed they would change their bid if it went beyond March 30?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, and the team's been in, you know, very frequent communication with S.D. Ireland in recent weeks, and it's clear they're under considerable pressure to fill their dance card. And the way the amendment gets it exactly right, we cannot -- there's great risk that we will lose them as a low bidder if we do not come to a decision on this.
So they said they would raise the bid, or no? Like, that's my question.
Yeah, they said, you know, they are under pressure, and it is -- and we cannot guarantee that we can hold them to the bid if we do not make a decision.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Buescher. Counsel Tracy?
I'm not going to support the amendment, because I think that we should go back to the drawing board and try to come up with a design that cuts costs more significantly and therefore would have a lower bid than the lowest bid currently. So I will not be supporting this amendment to the resolution.
Thank you, Counsel Tracy. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The two no votes are Counsel Buescher and Counsel Tracy. So that passes by a vote of 10-to-2. The Second Amendment is Counsel Jangs.
Thank you, Counsel President, and thank you for being here. And I think this community, again, need to definitely have something very tangible for us to move forward. My amendment is going to speak to the hard work that the administration been doing behind the scene. Almost nearly one-third of the total cost of the park has been raised. We received $1 million donation, another $500,000 donation, and then another $28,000. And I feel like this administration would want to do the work in making sure that taxpayers won't really feel the effect of the cost. And I think J. N. Nodelle did have a very good point. If the cost is here, it's because of the delays that we've been doing for over years. Burlington is not the Burlington of the 800. Burlington is now in the 21st century, and we need to stay competitive. I have always loved the plan, and I don't want to see more money from the taxpayers going to the park. To me, that's a fiscal responsibility in making sure that residents here are not putting much pennies into the park. And my amendment, and I would like it to be the second resolved clause after line 94, I do believe, depending on what resolution we're talking about.
Okay, we've got it as a second resolved clause. Counsel Jang?
Yep, and it says, "Be it further resolved that the city council urges the administration to make good faith efforts to secure further philanthropic donations to City Hall Park before the end of the project, to reduce property taxes, as reflected by the CIP annual bound and penny-for-park categories on the budget, being used to pay for the project from the budget of $1.25 million to less than $1 million, and for the administration to provide regular updates to the Board of Finance." I think this is a way for us to keep on searching further and further resources from those who have -- and we should be very proud to live in a city where public and private can meet to get things done. Thank you, and hope that you will support the amendment.
Thank you, Counsel Jang. Any discussion from the City Council?
Is there a second?
Seconded by Counsel Pine. Any discussion from the council? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously, and that language is inserted in the second clause. And we are on to the next amendment, which is Counsel Pine.
Point of order, Counsel Wright.
Counsel Order -- Point of Order, Counselor Mason, what is your point of order?
The hour is late, and I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to allow us to complete our agenda.
Counsel Mason has moved that we suspend our rules, complete our agenda. It requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Counsel Mason. We've passed the suspension of our rules, and we'll continue to complete the agenda. Counsel Pine?
Mr. President, since we're going to go through some line-by-line amendments, I really feel that the full council and the public, both here tonight and the viewing public, would benefit from hearing from staff about what changes have been made, because a lot of comments were made earlier in public forum. The indicated people are wondering how we got to this number, so could we do that now?
Let's get right into it. You have the floor to explain, I think, basically what you told us at the Board of Finance.
Yeah, no, we have a display. So I'm Laura Wheelock, DPW. For those who aren't familiar, Norm Baldwin and Nina from our Parks, Recreation and Waterfront.
Make sure you pull the microphone in, speak clearly, so we can all hear you.
So, yes, we've done a lot of work in the last few weeks after receiving the bids from S.D. Ireland to try to find ways to bring the park back within the budget that was presented to you and within the revenue sources that we could afford for it. As Counselor Nodelle mentioned earlier, there was several factors why we believe that our bid -- bid price came in higher than anticipated, listed in the memo that was submitted to the council, things like the contaminated soils that were not known previously. To have a value number, we are still learning more information as we go through the corrective action plan with the state, so that is still open-ended. The tree management plan, as we discussed with both bidders who submitted on this project, indicated that the means and methods, the labor hours that are going to be needed to be able to preserve the trees that are in the park, has certainly impacted, impacted the costs that were received. There's also just the timeline that we're on for bidding. We are in the end of what is usually the competitive season. Most contractors have their work for this summer lined up before February. And as mentioned, S.D. Ireland, their cart is full. They don't actually need this work. They are taking it because they do, do a lot of projects for the city and are honoring their bid until we complete our process tonight. The other factor that's come into play, which you will see with some of our other projects that we have asked for approval for and will be coming forward with, material costs are just higher this year. Paving bid, sidewalk bid, City Hall Park's bid, our water work, it's all coming in higher than estimated. This is due to contractor availability and the numerous projects that are out there for work to be done. Brought up on the screen is the value engineering that has gone into both the memo as well as the amendment that I believe is coming forward tonight. Before we leave our, are the motion coming forward tonight? Before we leave the memo, I do want to note that the Parks Department, as part of this value engineering, is taking on the landscape plantings within the park, the trees, and our stormwater gardens, as well as removal of the existing trees. And finally, if we do look at the fact that if this project does not go forward tonight, I want to recognize that there are still significant costs that need to go into the project. It was asked at the Board of Finance and we did a little bit of math in between, to look at the money that, if it was not allocated towards this park tonight, that would be available for other city uses. It's in the magnitude of $820,000 is the only city money that can be dedicated to other resources besides this park. And of that, there needs to be about 500 to remediate the soils out there. So it's not a lot of money if the park doesn't go forward tonight. So with that, I do want to go forward and talk about the value engineering items that are in front of you. There is a map that corresponds to these items, if you need to look at them graphically. The number at the top of the page is the base bid for S.D. Ireland as it was received. This, again, does include the value engineering of having Parks do all of the plantings and procurement for that work next spring. There are two additives into that cost. One was going to be needed regardless. It's the $30,000 for the fence. This goes around the HVAC equipment and the new electrical equipment. This was just done to give us alternatives for the different finish of that fence. There's also an elective ad to finish the Parks grass with sod instead of a seed. This will create a more finished product when the contractor finishes next year. Included in your memo are the items that are in the first table. To quickly go down through these, it's changing one of the tree protection items that Parks agreed to. There is a change of a granite drainage runnel. This goes along the diagonal portions of the park and is intended to collect the stormwater off of the sidewalks. As an exposed aggregate, it'll just be a roughened concrete surface. It's not intended for walking. It's intended to slow the water down before it hits our stormwater features. The next three items, one of which was included in the original value engineering and the other two are being proposed. This is changing the pavers at the three corners of the park from pavers to a concrete surface. These were already impervious pavers and so it's still staying as an impervious surface. The next change comes at the performance space, which was designated outside of City Hall Park's steps. This space was originally to be all pavers. In the proposal, we are changing the pavers inside of Park Lane to be pervious pavers, which will be congruent with, or will match the rest of Park Lane. And then the performance space, which is west of that, will turn into concrete. This has a function in the fact that it actually becomes a, a little bit easier of a surface to work with for those who are setting up and, and actually performing and using that space, to have an even concrete surface versus what can happen to paver sometimes in our climate. The next item is elimination of 400 linear feet of granite curbing. This hasn't been identified specifically, but there are several gardens, edges within the park that are currently bounded and edged by granite. The idea is that we will work with Parks and the project team to identify areas where these raised beds don't necessarily need to be raised and they can be at the same surfaces, the sod and the grass. The next change is of the first deduct of the College Street Terrace. This is the area just west of the RERAS establishment and before you hit Park Lane. In there, there are granite stairs that were being proposed, that we are proposing to change to concrete. Moving down, we hit the retaining walls throughout the park. There are retaining walls at the College Street Terrace, along the Main Street South Edge, at the BCA Plaza Edge, that were to be a granite veneered wall. We are proposing to make these a form-finished concrete. They could be a colored concrete. They can be any finish that we are looking for. They're still a very durable material that will more than serve their purpose as a seat wall. The next change is regarding the bathrooms. This change was proposed by S.D. Ireland, where they proposed taking, removing the off-the-shelf Portland Lou that their project team had selected and providing a wood construction restroom facility. They thought for the cost that was remaining in the project, that they could actually probably build two bathrooms in this one location versus the one off the shelf. The next change comes to the rain garden on the south wall. This is a small change, but with changing the south wall to a concrete material, we thought that it was best to change the granite blocks that serve as a bridge over this rain garden to also be concrete to match materials. The next change that is listed in this table talks about changing the wood benches to metal benches. This was not a change that was proposed in the original value engineering that's in your memo, but is one that is being proposed tonight. These benches are still within the Great Street style. They are just a less costly alternative to the wood bench. The last one in this table that's in the memo is the tree grates, and that is changing the tree grates and guards to being the Parks standard style versus the Great Street style. So, summing up, the items that appear in column D of what's being displayed, that represents the 296, $296,000, that was the value engineering deducted from the base bid represented in the budget that was presented in the memo. The further work that has occurred since that time is DPW's taken a closer look at the items that are inside of the bid for S.D. Ireland. We looked at items such as the traffic control officers that may or may not have been used to help trucks get in and out of the site and maybe help with work near the St. Paul Street signal and thought that this is not a cost that needs to be carried at this amount. The use of variable message boards. We actually struggle with this on other contracts. DPW owns four of these ourselves. We don't necessarily feel the need to have a contractor pay or cost us what is the cost of a board that we own, so we will be providing those. The next item is elimination of the uplighting for BCA. So this was a change that was made from what is permitted. The permit plans for the park show uplighting on both City Hall Park and the Firehouse Gallery. In looking at the work that was anticipated for City Hall, we had broken out the uplighting of City Hall as a separate add-alt, which we are not electing to take inside of the contract for consistency purposes. We are proposing to eliminate the uplighting at the BCA building. This serves a dual function in that the video camera systems that exist around City Hall Park's building to watch its building facade, similar with BCA, there is a potential for interference of the uplighting with those systems. The next item eliminates the remaining portions of the proposed wood construction bathroom, leaving only the underground facilities as discussed during the Board of Finance, but for your benefit here tonight, this is something that we, you know, would likely come forward with at a later date in time, maybe when the city's bathroom policies are a little bit better ironed out. But it is being proposed to be removed from S.D. Ireland's contract at this time. The next one on the maps that were distributed to you is the elimination of the granite bollards and metal fencing on the College Street edge of the park. This is shown as a red line on your plan. This is a decorative fencing that was to be used to help keep people out of the heavily landscaped bed. We feel that the landscaping and the curbing on that side will be sufficient to help keep pedestrians contained to the right-of-way and the landscaping will also assist. The next item is removal of the College Street Terrace in its entirety. Again, this is the area that is shown, that is impervious, right next to the RERAS establishment and before Park Lane. As shown on the map, it is a dark green. The area that is inside the right-of-way sidewalk would still remain. It just would not get replaced under the project. This area would become grass. Next is outside of the Firehouse, BCA Gallery. This entire space between the Firehouse Gallery and the ellipse in the center was proposed to be pavers. They are all impervious pavers at the moment. We are proposing to change the pavers that would be inside of Park Lane to be a pervious material and then the other material would go to concrete. I do want to point out that inside of the plan, the east-to-west walkway that goes from the alleyway all the way out to St. Paul Street is also concrete. So as you look at the blue square out next to the Firehouse Gallery, that is still a concrete area and it would just blend with that pathway. The changes that happen at both the performance space and the Firehouse Gallery are going to be adding additional areas of pervious material and hardscape to this plan that were not previously in the design. And the last proposal is removal of a small section of the ellipse wall. This is the area that is circled in a red bubble on your map. The designers, when they proposed this section of the ellipse, indicated that it would create better separation between the Firehouse Plaza space and the programming that may or may not happen inside of the ellipse area. The design team or the city team feels that this could also be accomplished with evergreen And then finally, so that, so that concludes the proposed changes that would come from the scope of work inside of the park and related to S.D. Ireland's budgets and proposals. The other items that we identified to find savings, one is the reduction in contingency that needs to be carried. So as we reduce the construction contract down, we're also going to ratchet down the contingency appropriately. The next item is to remove the on-call engineering MPM services that are shown in the memo. This is to basically have provided the Parks Department with MPM services to manage a construction project throughout the duration. This service will now be provided by DPW as the replacement for the need for that guidance. And then finally, is removal of contracted resident engineering services and using DPW to provide those.
Council Pine, the floor is still yours.
Thank you, Mr. Acting President. So I just want to, I want to thank staff for, for all the work they've done. It's been a difficult process. I'll be the first to confess that nine years ago or eight years ago, I was an employee at SITO when this project began and I actually wasn't that excited about it. I actually thought that there was a much less expensive way, and I probably still do believe, as a frugal Yankee that I am, that there's probably a less expensive way to do this. But that's not really our decision tonight, in a sense, because we gave the green light last summer when we approved to move forward. So, in echoing the comments of Councilor Nodel, I don't think that's actually what we're here to debate tonight. The construction contracts that came in, the bids that came in, reflect market conditions and reflect perhaps some elements of the project that are maybe too rich for our blood. And so the administration has shaved the project cost accordingly. There is a level of taxpayer dollars that was the same as it was. There's no additional taxpayer dollars over what was pledged to support this project. So I think that, in light of that, I'm going to offer the amendments to effectuate the changes that were just described by staff. All right, so, starting at, inserting at line 58, would now say, whereas city staff and city councils have worked to find opportunities for cost savings, including value engineering and self-performing, some of the work included in the project as detailed in Table 1. Table 1 is the one that was handed out recently by Jordan. It has a blue line separating down about two-thirds of the way down the page. Next change is, I'm going to list all these and then I'll, I guess, review them as a slate. Would that be okay? So inserting at line 90, after city council, should say, accepts the construction budget and scope changes described in Table 1 and, and continue as, as it is now, inserting at line 96, after budget, to be in conformance with Table 1, which includes a source with a maximum of $1,250,000 of property taxes, as reflected by the CIP annual bond and penny for Parks categories on the budget, and up to $3,415,163 from the other listed sources. In lines, I need to do this together with, in line 83, to substitute $4,776,193.70 In, also in that line, excuse me, it would go from $476,46 to be replaced with $445,854.80, substituting total maximum contract of $5,252,239.70 with a new number of $4,920,136.80. And then lastly, in line 102, substitute interfund loan amount of $902,897 with $358,807.
Okay, the motion has been made by Council Pine, seconded by Council Dean. It's on the floor. Council Pine, do you need the floor back or are we opening it up to the council?
I think, I think I'd just like to close by saying, as much as I wish we were at a different place and as much as I actually supported putting this question to the voters, we lost that fight another day. We are here today where we are because we went through the political process and this is where we've landed. I prefer to work with the reality that we exist with rather than wish that we had a different outcome and hold on to that wish. So I'd rather just work together to do that.
All right, great. Thank you, Council Pine. Council Paul is the first one that was in the queue, then Council Mason, then Council Hartnett.
Thank you very much. So I have a couple of questions that I wanted to ask. So, I'm not sure that, you know, in the, in the presentation, and I, I only heard part of the presentation at the Board of Finance, and I think you might have even said it and it may have slipped by me. One of the things about the park design that I think people do like is the, the stormwater and the pervy, and the, the less pervious, yes, more pervious surface, not impervious. And you mentioned something and you had said, and I, so I don't want to put words in your mouth. Did you say that there would be more or less impervious or pervy, however you want to put it? Or is there going to be more or less? Just so that we can all sort of understand that.
So for clarification, the proposed revisions under the amendment will increase the pervious surfaces in the park and decrease the impervious by removal of the College Street Terrace.
Okay.
So it's both.
All right, so there will be more pervious surfaces, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
On Park Lane.
All right, now, then my, my next question is, you know, one of the ways that some of these costs have been adjusted is because some of the work is going to be done in-house.
Correct.
Okay. So, there's limited resources in the city. Most of the time I hear that, you know, departments are pretty stretched. They, the, the construction season is only so long and there's so much that needs to be done. How is it that, how do those two sort of work together? If there is so much to be... If there is so much to be done, and departments are stretched, then how is it that some of the work is going to be done in-house, and other things are not going to be sacrificed?
I wouldn't say that nothing's going to be sacrificed. Obviously, it does impact other projects and other schedules, but we, the fortune is that we have had additional staff.
Norv, could you pull the microphone in, please? We can't hear you.
We had additional staff added to our program in the last year, and we're finally getting up to speed with full staffing, so there's an opportunity there, but doesn't mean that it doesn't have an impact to other projects. You know, a particular thing that comes to my mind is, if we were to assign people to this project, how would we advance Rock Point Bridge project? All these things have an impact, but we will make it work.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
That's it for now.
Thank you, Counselor Paul. Counselor Mason.
Thank you, President Wright. My question is for Ms. Wheelock. I think I scribbled, as I heard you say that, you were here for public forum. We heard a number of comments about people who would like us to divert these funds to other, you know, necessary projects, whether it's sidewalk, memorial. But I thought I heard you in your presentation say that there would be, you know, $827,000 in available funds if the park does not go forward, and that of that 500, half a million would be spoken for because of, you know, necessary remediation. So it's laid, and my math is simple, but am I correct that your position is that if we were not to move forward with this project, there would be a net $327,000 available to the city to use in other projects in the downtown? Is that correct?
That is correct, and I reviewed it with the CAO as we were working through those numbers. The, the remaining funds in the park are, have, have high designations with them. They're either donations, or they are funds that come from the Champlin College Development Fee, and without an actual park project, to use those as an improvement in the downtown, they're not eligible.
Okay.
So the only remaining funds that we have yet to have spent, either on the design contract, or are eligible to date, come from the CIP bond and the CIP institutional revenue, and a very small portion of the pennies for parks that have yet to be spent. And that's how, adding up those line items, I get to the $820,000.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Thank you, Counselor Mason. Counselor Hartnett.
Yeah, just some general comments in reference to this project and deferring funds and using funds for this and using funds for that. I've given up that fight a long time ago. I've, I've used that excuse and talked about that so many times about, you know, we have four guys out removing snow from bike lanes in the middle of March, right? Type of equipment, why aren't we spending money elsewhere, right? But I, so when I hear that, I kind of feel your frustration, because I'm not quite sure how it all works, and sometimes I don't even want to hear the answer, actually. But in regards to Counselor Pine, you know, the changes that we made, you know, one of the last things I want to do is, I don't want to cheapen this, right? I mean, this is, this is the diamond in the rough here at downtown. This is extension of Church Street. This is, this is going to be something that I hope we look back on, and that, and I know there's people in this room that, you know, don't want this design, and don't want this project, and they say $6 million is way too much money. In reality is, $1 is way too much money for those people, right? They don't want this project to happen. I get it, I understand that, and I'd rather have you just say that, be upfront and honest with us, right? That $1 would be too much for you guys, and that's great, I get it, but that's not where we're at in the process, right? And so I didn't really want to take funds away from this. I didn't want to cheapen it, I didn't want to take the bathrooms away. I do want to use granite. I want this to be the nicest-looking park that we have in the city of Burlington, because it's in the heart of our downtown, and we should be proud of that. A few years back, I was going crazy up here, because we were going to spend $4 million on a skate park at the waterfront. $4 million on a skate park. I said, are we nuts, right? And I go by there now every day, and I see that park filled, and I see people coming from all over to use it, and I see families, and I see kids, and I say to myself, geez, I was wrong, right? If I had that vote over again, I'd vote to support that park. It's quality of life, it brings people to Burlington, we should be proud of that. Nice things cost money. I get it, I understand it, and it's tough on taxpayers, but we're not increasing that side of this. We always knew what the taxpayers were going to put into this project, right? And so I'm saddened tonight that I'm going to support some of the changes, just so this will pass, because I do think we're cheapening this project, and I think we're gipping ourselves, and we don't realize it, and that, to me, is too bad.
Thank you, Counselor Hartnett. Counselor Busher, then Counselor Tracy.
Thank you. So we're talking about the amendment that's being put forward by, yeah, by Counselor Pine, okay. So there are parts of the amendment that are spot-on, talking about the fact that the city staff and councillors have worked really hard to find ways to save money. And so I, I agree with that, but I think that, I think that, I'm kind of surprised at the conversation. So if you design an addition to your house, and the cost comes in too high, you then start, you can do a couple of things. You can either redesign, or you can start eliminating things, okay? But then, when you get down to making, reducing, eliminating some things that are, if it was an addition to your house that needed bathrooms, and you've eliminated that, then it makes you rethink, is this really the direction I should be going in, or should I be giving this a second look? To me, I think it is germane to talk about the cost. I don't think that is, that's off the table. I think the plan is off the table, but the cost is not. The cost is what brings us together. This is why we're here, to talk about the contract for reconstruction of City Hall Park, and it is the cost. So to me, that is germane, and so I don't accept the argument that it's not what we should be talking about. I think the cost is related to quality of materials. I spoke about concrete versus granite. Concrete pits, and we heard an architect or someone come up and say that the life expectancy, which I can't speak to, is a lot shorter than granite. I know that to be true, but I can't speak about how, what the life expectancy is. I think that the fact that, I was told there's more concrete in this design. That's what I was told at the Board of Finance. So I do believe there's more concrete in the design, and so I need clarification about that. And then the other piece is that there were changes to this plan, and I guess I'm surprised that everyone's like, oh, hum, well, we're just changing the plan. Whereas when we were talking about the trees, we weren't going to change anything except what trees were removed, so now we would change the plan. And one example is, you're going to put in, you're going to eliminate the raised beds for planters. So if you eliminate the raised beds, people are going to trample on those plants. That was the point of the raised beds. So I think people have to start thinking about really what we're talking about here. At least I'm trying to kind of simulate all of this in a very short period of time. I don't appreciate the fact that I have tonight to decide this, when everything was so fluid, and I understand things are happening as we speak, but I think we create the pressure, we create the short timeline. I'm not convinced this is the timeline. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Busher. Counselor Tracy.
Thank you. So I have a question first, and it's really with regards to some of the choices that were made in terms of eliminating certain elements versus others. And so I was wondering how much specifically the splash pad cost, and why there wasn't a decision to eliminate that instead of the bathrooms, for instance, which is something that we have a dire need. I mean, people are peeing on the side of this building.
So fundamentally, one of the funding sources for the park does come from a donation, and it does relate to reconstructing the water feature in the park. So it's not a choice of an idea or an item that we can eliminate. We have worked extensively on trying to find what the right balance is for the water feature in the park, and ultimately, it came down to, we could eliminate a few of the jets that go into the splash pad without having to force a major redesign of the entire system, the vaults, the piping, and the aesthetics that go with the splash pad, in the timeline of this value engineering, and with the premise of not trying to redesign the entire park. So we did look at it, it's not an element that's as easy to change out. A lot of these materials, we already had with inside the existing bid, and we are just expanding those areas. The value, as you asked, the fountain came in around $620,000 for the unit item, but that does not include the civil site work that goes with it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I just want to continue a little bit. So I appreciate that, and I certainly appreciate all the hard work that this, that both the folks in Parks and DPW have done on this project. This is not necessarily a commentary on you as professionals, and I certainly appreciate that. However, I do think that the, that it's been very challenging to fully understand this in the context of tonight, when items are just being loaded to board docs when we're having the meeting. Seriously, if you go on board docs right now, you see documents being loaded on at 6:40 or something like that, and that's a really difficult way to do that. And I would also pick up on Sharon's comment that we were, that people opposed eliminating any sort of pervious, or any, any sort of impervious surface in the context of the tree discussion, but now are suddenly okay at the last minute doing so. I also think that there, so I think there's certainly a process issue here, and one that was only exacerbated by the intervening step that took place, which was the fact that folks, that folks went through a petition process and had that petition voted, voted down, are not allowed to proceed, so we didn't really truly get that check-in. So I think there's certainly that aspect, and then I think there's also an issue of prioritization that's really hard to weigh in the context of having these decisions sooner, and I don't know how to weigh all of these competing desires. Moreover, I don't know necessarily how to weigh the desires of the public, because they really haven't had a chance to adequately comment on this, because a lot of these final changes are really only coming to us tonight, and haven't had a full, fully adequate public review, meaning that, you know, we could go to the public if we take more, take a step back and say, Portland Lou, or Splash Pad? Like, do you need bathrooms, or do you need a Splash Pad? And we haven't had that chance. And so while I appreciate the efforts towards, towards cost cutting, I don't know that I can fully, that I can support either this amendment or ultimately the full resolution, because I think that there's issues of process and prioritization that are present here that have not been adequately weighed or given enough time to be worked out.
Thank you, Counselor Tracy. Counselor Paul.
Thank you. You know, this is, I think this is a really good example of what I think, trying to remember who it was that said this tonight, might have been Counselor Odell, I can't remember, but someone said that, you know, a lot of these decisions are not at all black and white, they are very, very difficult, and weighing all of these is, is, is challenging, it's really challenging. You know, I, my understanding about the Splash Pad is that one of the philanthropic donations was made, and I wouldn't say contingent, I would say in part because of a family member who they want to name that Splash Pad after, a woman who was a, in a wheelchair, and this was in a way that people who are not as able-bodied as many of us are able to enjoy aspects of the summer by being able to be in a, a flat surface with water. You know, and I certainly know there's plenty of kids that love those as well. Is that, is that basically why that is not being offered as an option to reconsider?
I think that's in part one reason, but the other reason, of course, is obviously when you start significantly changing the design of the project, you run the peril of going back through a permitting process or redesign.
So in other words, what you're saying is that not only is there that consideration, but if you change that, you're then in a position where you have to go back and basically go through part of the process again in terms of permitting?
Correct.
I, I don't think that the size of the Splash Pad is in the permitting. I think that we would be free to change that. It is a significant months of redesign from the designer. Again, the size of the system, we have three pumps. If we reduce beyond three jets, we now need to go to two pumps. It's a different-sized vault, it's a different-sized containment, it's a different-sized chlorination, it's different piping sizes, it's everything. It's not just removing five heads or six heads to save $15,000. You're going to be paying design costs that go with that, and you're going to lose your trade-off. So it's, it's not about permitting, it's about the months of design, and that the value you could save by reducing the size of the, of the splash item, you're going to pay back a portion of that in the design costs.
Okay, so when you came up with this list of potential savings to the project, you were not only looking for changes that you could make that would lower the cost, but also where there wouldn't be a trade-off?
Or a cost to them.
New costs.
Or there would be a new cost created, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Paul. Counselor Dean, and then Counselor Pine.
Thank you, President Wright. I'd like to start by saying welcome to my world. I can't even begin to count the number of hours that I've spent sitting down with design teams, of which I am a part, engineering teams and owners, and talking through how to make the changes that are necessary to get a project in so you can actually construct it. And I'm in that process right now with a much larger project on a scale of 10 times to 15 times the cost of this project. And we, these are capable designers, capable engineers, capable cost estimators and, and construction managers, and we're all working on a very thorny issue of how to get the project down to cost. So I think there has been some suggestions tonight that somehow the, the city's team had not done their work, that they hadn't paid attention to the details, that they, you know, that there had been a slip-up here, and I don't think that's true at all. It's part, and we're seeing this on projects we're working on currently, where the market is really not bringing us, the, based on past, we can't use past expectations to understand what the costs are to us coming back from the market, because it just, the, the materials are up, people are busy, they have, they have their dance card filled, and so they, you know, with a little uncertainty, they're going to raise their prices. So we, I, I think we've seen changes in the project that are, and it's very logical that we're seeing the, the cost increases that have come back to us. So I also would offer, offer just a couple more thoughts about the value engineering process, and, and we face this all the time with all the projects that we do, where you get to the point where you have to make cuts. And I think, you know, we've wrestled, and the team has wrestled with this effectively in that majority of the cuts that are offered, or a significant number of the cuts that are offered are in material changes. And so if you look at granite, or you look at concrete, granite is a wonderful material, but stepping back to concrete still leaves the function in place. You can still walk on it, it's still durable, it doesn't provide perhaps as much of the aesthetic value, but it still works. I think that's true of the benches that are proposed for substitutions, you know, the pervious pavers and so forth that are proposed where concrete is now. Those all are not perceived by the, you know, the public, and I'm not sure people even noticed the details previously that, that had these in place. So taking them away, although painful, does not change the essence of the project. I think, you know, eliminating the message board, the uplighting to the, you know, the Firehouse, the BCA headquarters, as, those are, those are things that we didn't even, I think most, majority of the public didn't even know those features were there. So taking them away, again, seems like a logical step when you're, when you're faced with this situation. So I, I think that, you know, my, the overall summary to what I'm saying, first of all, value engineering or value management is this process, it's for definition as, as Counselor Paul requested. This is normal, it's, it's difficult, it's what we do all the time, and I commend the city and the team for doing an excellent job in bringing us a proposal that allows this project, that has the potential to allow this project to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dean. Counselor Pine.
Sure, one, Mr. President, one question is just a yes or no question, but it's to the table, the members of the panel here, the staff. Is the current value engineering, does the current value engineering eliminate the, the public restroom?
Yes.
Okay. I understood that, but a councillor at this table didn't, so I just wanted to clarify that. And so therefore, there'd be no bathroom under the current proposal. The other thing I just want to ask is, if the staff could answer the question Counselor Busher raised, which is, is there more concrete? And I think the answer is more concrete, but less impervious.
And I think the answer is more concrete, but less impervious surfaces, is what I heard you say.
Yeah, so in the essence of trying to answer the question as it was asked, technically there will be more yards of concrete poured into the park, but it's in place of the pavers. So the amount of impervious area in the park will be reduced because the College Street Terrace is being eliminated and the amount of impervious surface specifically related to Park Lane being changed to pervious pavers increases the amount of pervious surface that was previously impervious. We are not adding any patios or any terraces or any of those areas. There will be more grass and more pervious pavers in the proposal.
I'll say, Counselor Pine. Counselor Jiang.
Couple of thoughts, and I think the first one is about the bathroom. So there won't be any bathroom in the park as it is right now. No restroom, no bathroom, nothing.
Correct. Only the piping ready to receive a bathroom will be installed.
And if we wanted to add a bathroom, would that increase the cost of the design? Not only the cost of the bathroom, but will that increase the cost?
The contractor had proposed that that would be about a $40,000 increase to put a stick-built bathroom in there, and that would include a design element for it.
So now the park is no longer $6.3 million. What is the current cost without the bathroom right now?
5.8. 5.84.
5.8, and of that 5.8, 1.5, 0.3 is donation, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, President Wright. First, just a couple of clarifications maybe help with the conversation and then just like to share my kind of bigger picture thoughts on the moment we're at here. First of all, with respect to the bathrooms, I want to be real clear on this. The amendment, as it's being proposed, would remove for now all of the above-ground elements of the bathroom. However, all of the utilities to that are still included in this and we would have, you know, about a year and a half until the new park opens to find a way to get that bathroom back in there. Certainly, I heard loud and clear from the public, this is something they want. We have a real need for it and, as we know in a variety of ways, when this park opens, there will be a bathroom there and we will find a way to replace that funding. This, we are going, this allows us to go forward tonight and with consensus and a way forward, but I'm committed to finding a way to get that back in there. I don't know whether it's going to be more philanthropy or it's going to be hustling in some other way, but we will get a bathroom back in there. There may be some thought, if we can make that a little easier by finding, you know, I would welcome that, but I'm committed to doing that. Secondly, I want to be just really clear, about the, this change from pavers, pervious, from pavers to concrete in some places is resulting in some additional water being able to flow into the ground, which may sound unintuitive, but I mean, the hydraulic, there's actually going to be more infiltration as a result of those material changes, not less. I do want to caution on the College Street Terrace, while the changes tonight will temporarily increase the pervious surface there, that too is an area where there may be solutions in the future to bring that back. And I don't want to be selling that. That change is being done, from my perspective, purely for cost-saving reasons, not for programmatic reasons. And I just don't want to be accused of misrepresenting in the future if that idea revives in some other way. That may be something that there may be, again, third-party sources for funding in some way in the future, but it is coming out tonight, but maybe not forever. Let me just step back and just give a bigger picture sense of, you know, kind of my sense of where we're at. You know, Richard's exactly right. These value engineering efforts are the worst parts of being in construction and development. They're always painful and hard, and to have to do that in this group process in this way makes it even harder. But I think I really do appreciate the team working through the weekend in response to counselors to put something in front of you tonight that we can act on and, and I think you've described it very clearly. I think if we get away from the weeds where we are for a moment, I think this is a really exciting night for the city of Burlington. We are on the cusp of making a decision that is going to ensure that we take this very troubled space that has plagued the city for decades, there have been demands from the public for decades to do something about. We are on the cusp of making the final decision that is going to dramatically improve this key public space in the heart of our downtown. Great public spaces require real investment. Counselor Hartnett's exactly right about that. We know that, we can reflect on that, whether it's down on Waterfront Access North with the skate park or a little farther north in the Urban Reserve where we built a new park out in what used to be Texaco Beach or at the airport. We know these are great uplifting public spaces. They totally change the character of the community. They make their, part of what makes Burlington a great place. We are, we all remember, I think those of us on this council, how great the reaction from the public was when we opened those spaces on the Northern Waterfront just a couple of years ago. When we open the new City Hall Park, I am totally confident, even with having to make some concessions tonight, we are going to be opening a public space that is vastly better than the one we have today, that is going to be appreciated by the public greatly when it's there and that is going to benefit this community for generations. So we got a chance to do something big tonight. I really hope we grab this opportunity and don't let it slip through our fingers. If we do, I think we'll regret it. I think we will, in contrast, instead of having that great public moment as a city in our near future, we instead will spend many, many years walking by this downtrodden site the way it is today, and we won't get this opportunity back for a long time. Let's not blow it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other city councillor? I think we, oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Counselor Roof.
Missed me twice, President Wright. Just a point of clarification, we're still on the Pine Amendment.
We are. Yes, we are.
Okay, so we're sort of, we're a little bit, moving around a little bit.
Hope to get to the end of it.
And on the, so I'll maybe reserve some comments for after this vote, but I'm going to support this amendment because I feel it represents a good faith effort to try to get this, this plan, this budget to a position where it can pass the majority of this council. Because we are not debating whether or not this should have been on the ballot, we're not debating whether or not the process was flawed at some point in time or at any point in time tonight. The question that we have in the city council is whether or not to move forward a plan that has been approved in multiple iterations by this council or a makeup that looks primarily similar to it, and whether or not we want to fund that project. And we're being eyes wide open and upfront that the sticker shock was real and that there was an estimate that we were operating under and it came in higher than many of us were comfortable with. And this amendment represents, like I said, an effort to mitigate that sticker shock and still find a way to be action-oriented, meaning try to find a way to move forward. So I'll be supporting this amendment and maybe I'll chime back in when we get to, back to the item.
Thank you, Counselor Roof. I think we are ready to vote. The clerk shall call the roll.
Counselor Busher?
This is on, yes, this is on the Pine Amendment. We are voting on the Pine Amendment and the clerk is calling the roll.
No. Counselor Dean?
Yes.
Counselor Jing?
Yes.
Counselor Hartnett?
Yes.
Counselor Nodelle?
Yes.
Counselor Mason?
Yes.
Counselor Paul?
Yes.
Counselor Pine?
Yes.
Counselor Roof?
Yes.
Counselor Shannon?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
No.
City Council President Wright?
Yes.
10 ayes, 2 nays.
The amendment passes by a vote of 10 to 2, Counselor Pine's amendment, and we are on to the actual resolution now, as amended three times. And we'll recognize Counselor Hartnett to start out.
I just, just for a brief second, want to go back to the bathrooms. I did support the amendment, but I am disappointed the bathrooms aren't there. After spending, I think, one public safety meeting, two hours talking about writing citations for public urination, how close to somebody has to be to a bathroom downtown to get that citation, I mean, the need is real for those and to cut those out, it's really unfortunate. And so, but again, to Counselor Pine's point, you got to deal what you got to deal with and you got to make concessions and you got to get this thing done. But I really, you know, I'm not going anywhere. I might not be sitting here, but I'm not leaving Burlington and I'll be watching and this, this has got to happen, right? We got to have public bathrooms and nice public bathrooms, right? They got to be, I mean, come on, right? So I really hope that we're committed to do that and to get the resources and the financing for them. Thanks.
Okay, Counselor Roof, and now we are back again, we are back on the actual resolution now.
Counselor Hartnett touched on what I want to touch on. I've spent, Dave, you, Counselor Hartnett was in that meeting, a lot of time has gone into thinking about how in the downtown we can offer more publicly accessible bathrooms. I don't look maybe at the same, this in the same way that Counselor Hartnett does in a sense. We are going to have that bathroom in City Hall Park. And if this proposal came forward by eliminating the underlying, literally the underlying infrastructure required to have a bathroom in the park, it would have been a non-starter for me and I thank the team being thoughtful enough to maintain that. Like I said in my, a few minutes ago, we are working towards a budget that the majority of this body can support because we are trying to be action-oriented here, trying to move forward with progress. Whether or not it comes from a donation, the mayor spoke to this pretty well, the bathroom is needed and quite frankly, if I were to go into a room and design the bathroom piece of this park, it would look a lot different. There'd be a lot more bathrooms and we build them, we would build them six months ago. But that's not the way that process works in Burlington. And so love it or hate it, at its final iteration, or maybe agnostic on it, in the final iteration, this is the product of a, of at least you can all agree on, a long process that has gotten us to a point where this body is being asked to do its job, which is to vote and make a decision. I'll be voting yes on this and I look forward to working to make the park plan even better knowing that we have some concessions being made here tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Roof. Other councillors or are we ready to vote? We just had a significant debate. Counselor Jiang.
Yes.
No other. But I think it's important also to highlight that, yes, this will have my vote and I think I stated why. You know, the community will not be paying much money for this park and Burlington needs to stay the best city in the state and also be competitive regionally. And I think in order for people to come here, they should see beautiful things. We need to build assets and then when we have them, we strengthen them, we polish them, we keep them. And I think the park is one of them. But one thing is clear, I will never forget and personally, the way that this council refused to give the resident of this city a vote about this issue. It doesn't matter where I stand, but I think I was here when we refused to tell people of Burlington, you don't have a say into this. Thank you. And my vote is yes.
Thank you, Counselor Jiang. We are ready to vote. The clerk shall call the roll.
Counselor Busher?
No.
Counselor Dean?
Yes.
Counselor Jiang?
Yes.
Counselor Hartnett?
Yes.
Counselor Nodelle?
Yes.
Counselor Mason?
Yes.
Counselor Paul?
Yes.
Counselor Pine?
Yes.
Counselor Roof?
Yes.
Counselor Shannon?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
No.
City Council President Wright?
Yes.
10 ayes, 2 nays.
The City Hall Park Plan moves forward with a 10 to 2 positive vote. Item 4.07 is a public hearing regarding the Burlington Municipal Development Plan. So we, Meghan and Chair of Planning Commission, Andy Montrow, will maybe just give us a very brief couple of sentences on this, then we'll have the public hearing and the vote presumably.
Very briefly, we're here tonight for the second public hearing on the update to the municipal development plan called Plan BTV. After the council president opens the floor for public comment, we are asking you to consider a resolution this evening to re-adopt that plan update, which includes a number of incorporated and referenced plans, including Plan BTV South End, which is the only plan that has not previously been approved by this board.
You've already heard a lot about the plan, so we're open to questions, but unless you have any questions, I think we're all set with it.
Okay. Counselor Busher does have a question.
Yes. So, thank you. Thank you, President Wright. In your, first of all, this is a very nice overview of the goals, but I didn't see anything referenced regarding Centennial Woods. And is there anything referenced? And I know that I can't start this over again, I'm not suggesting that, but it seemed to be an omission that maybe shouldn't be an omission.
In terms of the plans that are referenced or just in terms of how the woods are discussed in the plan overall?
It seemed as far as, you know, you talk generically about goals, about historic settlement. Anyways, as you go through your goals, there's nothing, there's a discussion about environment, there's a discussion about a lot of things, air quality, but there isn't really any reference to Centennial Woods. And I thought that was an omission maybe, but I just am asking you.
Sure. So in the plan, we talk pretty extensively about the entire network of open spaces and natural areas in the city. One of the main themes of the land use section is about areas of the city that we're planning to conserve and really enhance as those natural open spaces. So certainly in that section of the plan, we point to Centennial Woods, we map it that way, that it's an area that we want to conserve for that purpose. But we discuss the relationship to our Open Space Protection Plan, which discusses each one of the city's natural areas and open spaces in much greater detail in terms of their value and the other ecological or ecosystem benefits that they provide to the city.
So it is there?
It's in that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Busher. Any other questions for the team? Hearing none. Thank you very much. We will open up the public hearing. So opening the second public hearing on the BTV plan, is there anyone who would like to speak in the public forum on this issue? Going once, going twice, gone. This is, we're in a public forum right now, this is just for the public forum, right? Yep.
From someone from the...
Go ahead, make it, make, go ahead.
It's okay.
Go ahead, make, if you want to read it, go ahead.
I can't find it.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So we'll close the public hearing and now we will take a motion from Counselor Dean.
Thank you, President Wright. I would move that we waive the reading, adopt the resolution, and after a second, request the floor back.
Seconded by Counselor Roof. You have the floor back, Counselor Dean.
Thank you, President Wright. So I think we need to recognize how important this plan is to us and the work that has been put into bringing it to us today. It's targeted for providing a real response to what is frequently asked, I think, which is, do we have a vision for our city and why don't we have a Plan BTV for the whole city? So this represents an answer to that question. And one of the primary objectives of this update was to make the Plan BTV comprehensive plan, something that could be well-known by all members of the community. It could be more interesting to read and I think that it achieves that goal and more relevant and relatable to all of us. And I think, you know, what we've seen is that a document, this is a rewrite of an existing document that used to be 200 pages, is now 100, and that was 200 black and white pages, is now 100 pages with some really kind of engaging dialogue and diagrams that show what we're thinking about the city. And it's organized by issues that are relevant to Burlington residents rather than, you know, some state statute that has organized previous documents. So I think all of those are to the good and a huge commendation to... So, I think all of those are to the good and a huge commendation to the, all of the work that's gone in, for all of the work that's gone into this. But I also want to recognize one more thing, which is the public engagement process that was engaged in to get this to us today, where it was not led by an outside consultant, it was led by members of the planning staff and by planning commission members, who went out there, left City Hall, went out and talked with all kinds of student groups, not student groups, all kinds of citizen groups, went to all the NPAs, they presented and made efforts at outreach at the farmer's market, at the One Police Barbecue, the Little North End Police Barbecue event, there were city block parties they were at, and they even connected with people who were at their places of learning. So, I think what we see today is a document that really has future relevance for our city and I think that we all, this is, I'm proud to offer this, these remarks as my last official statement, as a, probably as a city councillor, and I think encourage all of my fellow city councillors to strongly support this adoption of this plan.
Thank you, Counselor Dean. Counselor Mason?
Thank you, President Wright. The hours late and you guys have been sitting there for hours, but I didn't want this moment to go without bringing to the public's attention and the councils that, you know, this, by adoption of this, also moves forward Plan BTV South End. And I wanna, as someone who was on the council and there when the plan first got, you know, put out for public comment in 2015, and thanking you for sort of taking the visceral reaction, being responsive, and also for the time that, you know, not only just the four of you sitting at this table, but, you know, your staff have done. I think, you know, the revised plan and the rollout that was done was a very different process than the first time, and I think that's because of the effort that you've put in and I do wanna thank you for that. I think the South End will benefit from having this plan actually adopted and then we can turn to start implementing some of the very important policies that have been put forth. And I know for some of my colleagues around the table, I think they're now looking forward to where do we go next, other than the South End. So thank you for your efforts and for sitting here for four hours tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mason, and thank you all for your hard work on this plan. We really appreciate it. Unless there's some other comments, we are ready to vote. All those in favor of passing readoption of Plan BTV, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we apologize for having to wait so late, but thank you. 4.09 is a resolution regarding a charter change on council recusal issues. Counselor Hartnett?
Yeah, I'd like to waive the reading of the resolution and ask for a second and then the floor back briefly.
Seconded by Counselor Pine. Counselor Hartnett's got the floor back.
Thank you. I did have this teed up to go a few months back and I pulled it and I didn't want this to be about Burlington Telecom. And I don't want it to be, although we've had this discussion about recusals and responsibility of councillors long before Burlington Telecom, but certainly the night of that final vote was probably the lowest moment for me on this council and it was a disappointing night for sure. And it just, you know, made me rethink that night that we need to look at our charter in regards to recusals. The resolution itself is vague and I'm hope that the Charter Committee will dive into this. I think one of the hardest things to do is self-evaluate, right, as an individual, as a body, that, you know, you have to look and you always wanna try to improve and be better and be more transparent. And I think when we all get elected, we raise our right hand, we take an oath and really the oath is, you know, that we would be forthcoming and honest and transparency to the public. I mean, I think that's the single first responsibility we have as elected officials. And the charter is very vague when it comes to recusals and I'm hoping that the charter change will take a look at recusals as far as some are recusing themselves right from the very beginning of a process of a resolution, but also when we've had those occasions and we've had more than one of them, where we have councillors that recuse themselves in the middle of it or towards the end of it and there's already been votes cast and what does that mean to the city and how should that work? And I know I had saw Counselor Mason's comments in the paper, I don't want Counselor Mason to get too nervous, it's not that I wanna keep attorneys off the city council, although the thought did cross my mind after I read the comments, to be honest with you, but that's not the purpose. The purpose really is for the charter change to really look at this and to see if we can strengthen that language, right? That we don't, we don't want the, we don't wanna lose public trust, right? We just cannot afford to do that, right? And this council was badly damaged that night. There was no question about it and we took a huge credibility hit. And there was no reason for that. So I hope we can move forward, we could take a look at this, I hope the charter change will. I hope they'll come back with some changes, maybe they won't, but I hope that they will. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Hartnett. This is to send it to the Charter Change Committee. Any discussion by the city council? Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Counselor Hartnett. We will go to item number five, committee reports. Is there any committee chair that needs to give us a brief report? Counselor Tracy?
Yeah. Very brief report on the Transportation Committee, because there's a couple items that are coming up. We had an issue, we have issues with recycling in this city and getting the toters out and we heard a great report from the city about the city staff that they've ordered 312 toters. Those toters should arrive by April 30th, so right now they're out, but once April hits, I'll send another, I'll send, I'll put another reminder out to the council and the public. There's gonna be different sizes, 30, 60 and 90 gallons. The budget for next year, they're conceiving of quadrupling it, so $50,000 to help subsidize and get more of those toters on, and that's crucial because we have 12,500 units across the city that are needing to have these. And the other issue that we dealt with was the bike and scooter share update. Just wanna be very clear with the public about a couple things. No contracts have been signed, no hub locations have been defined with regards to the scooter share, no launch date is set yet, there will be another round of public engagement coming in April around that. The number of them is still being, of the scooters to be employed will still be discussed. So there's a lot still up in the air, just wanna make sure that people who have further feedback, you're gonna get your chance on that. Two other things were that there is, that we did talk about crosswalks specifically, there are 29 in the queue, but one that is coming forward will be the North Avenue Crosswalks and that's gonna be at this week's Sports 4 and 7 NPA with DPW staff on hand, so that issue is being addressed along with a long queue of other crosswalk requests from the public, so they are working really hard to address those. And then finally, there will be an April 8th work session regarding water resources, staffing and how that department, how that aspect of the city works. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Tracy. Counselor Roof?
Public Safety Committee, this Thursday, 5:30. It's Room 12, we're gonna be, not taking any action, but there's been some pent-up requests around having a public hearing on a few items, containment removal policy, social media policy, a few other important items. So, no action planned, but we had, we had the time that worked for committee members, so we're gonna convene and have some discussions, but no actions contemplated.
Thank you, Counselor Roof. Any other committee chair? Counselor Hartnett?
PAC tomorrow night, last meeting for me as chair, 5:30. Everybody's on the docket, we're gonna get update from all departments and we're gonna get an update on highlighting how it went.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Hartnett. We'll close out the committee reports now and here, absent any objection, I'm gonna change the order and tonight, the mayor will give his report to us and then we are gonna finish it with something else tonight.
Well, thank you, President Wright. I think it's very fitting, this council that has done so much, is, the last session of this council is so busy, it is, it is so busy that it has kind of forced off the deliberate agenda, some items that I think on another night would have gotten a lot more discussion and note, and I do just want to quickly raise them here. The Early Learning Initiative, the First Steps Scholarships Program, the council took the final action tonight to make, to fully pass that budget. That budget had been sort of provisionally passed in last year's, in the FY20 budget with the idea that we would come back, flesh out that First Steps program, have CDNR weigh in on it further, have the Board of Finance weigh on it further, those two things have happened. And again, we're really trying to get the word out, we know applications are coming in, but there's still time for any households out there that are looking, think they might be interested in a scholarship for toddlers and infants. You have until April 5th to fill out that application. Go to the city's homepage or the family room or any of the child, high-quality childcare providers in town to get more information. I apologize for this, there's an administrative snafu, there was, you may, you got an email earlier today saying that somehow the City Place Burlington update from Jeff Glassberg didn't make it into the packet. It has been added to board docs now, you can read it. It is consistent with everything that has been said publicly and has been written about by some of our colleagues and I don't think there are any big surprises in there. The basic, you know, good news from that is that the city's experience working in design and construction teams has been consistent with what the developers have been saying publicly. There's a great deal of activity that is taking place right now and from everything that we can observe and engage in and participate in, the project seems to be getting back on track and headed towards the start later this spring that has been announced. The, we will work, I will work with President Wright and at one of the April meetings, a representative of Brookfield will be back to give an in-person update, again, in addition to this written update. And then finally, the, two last things. Also, at the Board of Finance, and you took action on the consent agenda, the CAO's annual fiscal health report is out and it continues to show that the city is moving in a positive direction financially. I think it's worth noting on a night where we've had this debate about tax dollars and investment, we are better positioned to make investments now than we, than we have been in a long time. The city's audit has continued to move in the right direction and notably, because of the credit rating improvements, we are spending much less on interest costs than we would have had we not, had we not secured those credit rating increases. This year, the CAO has estimated the dollar savings in 2018, in $2,019 to be $17 million in savings over the life of the bonds that we have taken out since the credit ratings began. And that will go up and go up a lot in the years to come as we know we are taking on more borrowing and that will be done much less explosively than would have otherwise. We'll see everybody back, invite the public in, there'll be, for the State of the City Address next Monday and we look forward to welcoming the public to that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know how you know that I'm gonna still be council president come April 8th, but you must know something I don't know. But, since you said you'd be working with me as council president after.
Oh, good point.
Anyway, so we're going back now to finish the night with item number seven, City Council President, and I am going to turn it over to Council President, Council President, former Council President Nodell, to wrap the night up as council president in this seat. But I am first going to, council, I think that her, the career of 20 years and the magnitude of Council Nodell's service here, her service brings a song to my mind. I'm not gonna sing it. I'm not gonna sing it, but it does bring a song to my mind that, that you'll recognize it, and I'm serious about this. We heard Ali Zapparo talk about all the things that you've done, we heard Lauren Glenn-Davidian, we heard the people from Ward 2 and Ward 3, and so, these are the words which you will recognize and I just, it always reminds me of you. To think you did all that, and may I say, not in a shy way, oh no, oh no, not Jane, she did it her way. For what is a Jane, Nodell? What has she got? If not herself, then she has not. To say the words she truly feels and not the words of one who kneels. You faced it all and you stood tall and did it your way.
Very nice. Very nice. President Chair, you're welcome. Bring us home.
It's taking me back to my glory days as council president, so I appreciate that opportunity. And I'm gonna make sure my mother hears that, she's gonna love that. But I did wanna offer some thoughts, a little bit more serious side, about where we are in our political life. And while I had a couple of great weeks, I was in Cartagena and then Florida and I was also following very closely what's going on in the United Kingdom with Brexit. And I got, saw this quote of a Labour Party Member of Parliament, Lisa Nandy, who represents Wigan, and it really resonated with me about where we are in Burlington today. And she, she offered these comments in a column she wrote for The Guardian, it was after Theresa May kind of issued a scathing rebuke of the parliament and kind of appealed to the people and kind of cast the parliament against the people. And she took serious offense to this and she, the quote is this, she says, "Populism, once unleashed, threatens the basis of liberal democracy itself. Democracy is precious and fragile. It cannot survive without a willingness to cope with the complexity of the world as it is." And that resonated with me because in this last campaign, I did it my way and we see how that worked out for me, right? But there were many of my votes and votes of the majority of the council that were raised and they were, really for the first time in my, in my political life in Burlington, these votes were characterized either intentionally or not, in very simplistic and misleading ways. She voted for the F-35s, of course, there was never any vote, you know, yes or no on the F-35. She voted for the 14-story mall, completely distorting the downtown project. She voted to sell Burlington Telecom. Well, that's, that's a whole hour to kind of unpack how misleading and simplistic that is. And I do think that it is a responsibility of elected officials to help the public and candidates, to help the public understand the complexity of the issues that this council deals with. And when we don't do that, we are doing the public a disservice, we are doing the city a disservice and we are not living up to our obligations, I believe, as elected officials. This is all very influenced by my being an educator and I think that facts should matter in Burlington and reasoned arguments should matter in Burlington. And let's not let it ever be different from that. And I think reflecting back is that really the ultimate test of your, of our success collectively is whether our decisions stand the test of time. And when I go back and I look at the F-35 vote, I look at the downtown project vote, I look at the Burlington Telecom votes that we took, I think, I think so far, it's pretty good. And I think we'll, we'll let the time go forward and we'll, we'll see what happens. But we've got a successful airport, we have a project that's moving forward, we're gonna have more people living downtown, so downtown won't be just a place for tourists, and we're going to have a telecom company that is, has strong connections to our economy, to our civic life, and that I believe is going to be, is going to see even better days in the future than it has in this past period of time. And I think that Burlington Telecom will be a way for full taxpayer recovery, but that will be a debate that the next council has. And I wish the next council all the, all the best, I'll, I'll miss you, I'll miss you all, I'll miss the work, but I wish you all the best in these decisions that you have coming forward and I do believe they will require measured and mature decision-making. And I have great trust in this body to kind of carry, carry that forward. So, with that, I would entertain with gratitude to all of you, a motion to adjourn. Hartnett and Dean?
There we go.
All in favor of adjourning at 11:50, whatever it is?
Three.
Three? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.